Good evening and welcome to the Suffolk Public Schools Meeting and Work Session. We're going to begin our work session with a follow-up and update on a discussion of collective bargaining, the follow-up on collective bargaining. Dr. Gordon, would you share with us?
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair, School Board members. I'm going to ask Dr. Rodney Brown to come to the podium, Director of Human Resources. This is more information that we wanted to be able to present to the school board on the collective bargaining process. We've also invited from the Employee Association of Suffolk, Ms. Ethel Williams, current chair, as well as Dr. Tony McNair, UNISERV Director, who's had some preliminary conversations alerting Dr. Brown and Mr. Waller of what is happening at the Virginia Education Association related to collective bargaining. At this point in time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Brown for introductions.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Greetings, board members, Madam Vice Chair, all of the members. Tonight, I do want to introduce two members of UNISERV and EEA who have opportunities to have some conversations. Been working up over the years now that collective bargaining is a part of what they're doing now. They're also a part of this process. So I want to get them out here and just talk about where we are.
Do I need to repeat all of that, y'all? Greetings to everyone that did hear it. What I said is that Dr. McNair and Ms. Ethel Williams from NEA, VEA, is here to talk about their, what they're doing with collective bargaining. So I do want to introduce, and they can come up, Dr. Tony McNair. He's the UNISERV Director for the Tidewater Region, and Ms. Ethel Williams is the local president for EAS. Dr. McNair?
Thank you all. All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay, so, it's working?
Is that my work?
It's spring. Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Dr. Brown, let's move him up to the front.
Dr. Brown, we will, we will clean off the mics in between speakers. We have some spray or something that we'll use to clean off the mics between speakers. And if you would like to pull down, do we have something to clean off the mics? If not, we have something to spray the mics. If you'd like to pull down your mask while you speak, you can. We're going to spray, we're going to... Is it up there? Just a moment. I want to say thank you for everyone who is in here for adhering to the health policy. We are in a very high COVID area, and so we want to thank you and appreciate those who are in the audience and those who are here for adhering to the policy. We do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Gordon and Dr. Brown, thank you for inviting EAS to this meeting. I am Ethel Williams, an educator at EFES since 1990. I've been employed with Suffolk Public Schools for the past 33 years, and this is my 35th year in education.
Thank you.
E...thank you. EAS is delighted to be involved in this process and working with you on bringing collective bargaining to Suffolk Public Schools. As you know, collective bargaining was around years ago and was reinstated in May of this year. Collective bargaining is an agreement on what is best for the employer and the employee. Collective bargaining has been found to be beneficial for all parties involved. Even though I represent the members of EAS, collective bargaining is available to all employee classifications in Suffolk. EAS is in the beginning stages. We are informing our members of collective bargaining and what it is all about. We're happy to go through the process with Suffolk Public Schools. I look forward to working with you and making this the best SPS. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
And to my dear friend, Dr. Brooks Buck, I haven't seen, haven't seen in a minute, but it's good to see you.
It's good to see you as well.
And to Dr. Gordon and Dr. Brown and Mr. Waller, good to see everyone here this evening. I just stood beside Ms. Williams to echo what she has said. We are in the very embryo stage. We are very, we're at the beginning of having conversations. We've had a conversation with Dr. Brown and his staff and Mr. Waller just to give them an idea of where we were with the whole notion of collective bargaining. As Ethel said, it is an agreement between employer and employee. The only difference in what we have been doing along the way, because we have an extraordinarily good relationship with Suffolk Public Schools, with Dr. Gordon, and he calls upon us when he needs us, and we call upon him and Dr. Brown. And so this makes it legal somewhat because the collective bargaining ban was lifted in May 1 of 2020. And so we're ed...at this point, we have not entered into any agreement. There is no agreement. In fact, there is no agreement in the state of Virginia as of yet. There are maybe three local associations that are further along and in, in the process because they got started really, really early preparing. But here in Suffolk, we get an opportunity to write the narrative together. The district and those who will select VEA, Virginia Education Association, as their exclusive bargaining representative. So what's happening right now is that members of the Education Association of Suffolk are being educated about what collective bargaining is. What's happening right now, we're taking it a step further in educating everyone who works for Suffolk Public Schools about collective bargaining. And they will have a choice whether to choose VEA as their exclusive bargaining agent or not. And so that's just, that's where we are. We're just educating folks, and as our team continues to work together, we are talking somewhere down the line of being closer to presenting a resolution. See, we have to present a resolution to you, and you look at the resolution, and as you look at the resolution, and we have conversations back and forth, we agree on it. And once we agree on it, then that means that you are, yes, let's, let's engage in collective bargaining. But until that happening, happens, we're only having a conversation. And so I left some information with Dr. Brown for you that is entitled "Collective Bargaining: What You Need to Know." And it gives some basic information, like the vast majority of educators across the United States bargain with their school boards. Teachers in 34 states and the District of Columbia have the right to bargain. ESPs, they are educational support personnel, or what you may call PARs, have the right to bargain in 31 states and DC. And then it gives some more research information that would, I think you will find helpful. But because of the relationship that we already have established, we feel confident that this will be a smooth process. And it's not designed at all to be aversive. It's, it's designed to strengthen Suffolk Public Schools, and it's designed to hear the voices of those who are on the ground, working with our students. And in closing, who will benefit most, our students. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, this time, with your purview or your permission, we would like to open this up for questions, if the board has any, for Dr. Brown, Dr. McNair, Ms. Williams, or Mr. Waller or myself to add to this. One of the things I do want to say before I turn it back over to you, Dr. Buck, is we know that with this being in such an early stage and phase, you're going to have corporations and associations that will begin to pitch to school divisions, the state, about them taking over and being the lead for collective bargaining. One of the conversations that I've had with some of my other superintendent partners is kind of asking the question about what other options are there. This is part of the reason why Dr. Brown gave the preliminary presentation to the board about it and why we asked for Dr. McNair and Ms. Williams to come today, just so you can hear it directly from the VEA and our local affiliate of EAS. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Buck, if there's any questions from the board.
Thank you. Board members, are there questions? Other questions from board members? Board member Storey, were you shaking your head? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Are there questions from any board members? Okay, then, board members, before a narrative is taken out here that is any further than it should go, let me just share with you how I know Dr. McNair. I am Baptist, and so is he. I am a singer in a choir. He is a musician, a wonderful one, a masterful musician, and a music teacher. And he was my neighbor. That's how I know him. I didn't know of his affiliation with the NEA or his job until I was told and I saw the, that he was going to be a speaker today. But that's how I know him. So before the narrative is taking, taken anywhere, then where it should go, he's a minister, a Baptist minister, and a musician, and was my neighbor. And that's how I know him. Okay? Thank you very much. Thank you for coming and sharing with us, and thank you, Ms. Williams. We appreciate you. Have a blessed one. Next on our agenda is discussion, and of course, I work on the strategic plan. As you know, when we had our self-evaluation, we talked, we talked about using our work sessions as a time to work on our discussions of the strategic plan. And so I'm thinking Dr. Branch is going to continue to take us through our steps.
Yeah, I want to tee it up for Dr. Branch, Dr. Buck, if you don't mind a little bit.
Oh, sure. Sure.
Is this being broadcast? Is this being recorded?
I would assume it's the same as it always is. Is this any different from what we're doing?
No.
Oh, okay.
Well, we didn't do the retreat, so you never know what we're going to do in the coming days.
We don't do, we haven't done retreats in past years, but, well, we're not going to have a discussion about that now. Let's go on.
So, Dr. Buck, as we discussed at the school board retreat and with the information that Dr. Branch has shared with the board previously, we wanted to try to get some feedback from the board on some of the core and key words and phrases that the board was looking forward to be a part of their next strategic plan. This is also a process that we have actually modeled with our leadership meetings, using some technology to actually be a visual aid into getting people to see what others within the group are thinking. Some of the things that we are asking the board today, we are also going to mimic and ask our constituents and our staff members as we get along this process. One of the things you'll see from Dr. Branch, you'll also review the timeline as we're thinking. We are going very well, pretty much ahead of the game right now, as we look to have this done probably in the next 12 to 15 months. So, Dr. Branch?
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Good evening, school board members, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair. As Dr. Gordon said, I'm really going to provide a little bit more guidance on the vision, mission, and core values. We discussed all of this during the retreat, and I shared with you the proposed timeline and some other information. I'll reiterate for those three areas tonight what the expectations are and provide some examples to you from different organizations. And I didn't, with intention, just choose educational institutions because I wanted us to look at having a vision, mission, and core values in a broader sense, and how that is developed. I also wanted to request your input as we continue to plan and go forward. So I have that information I'll be sharing towards the end, the feedback you all have provided. In the proposed SPS strategic plan development timeline, we're really looking at starting in October to gather data, review the division history, accomplishments, those things that we are going to put before the stakeholder groups. I shared during the retreat how important it is for us to write our story and to share our narratives in their truth so that the people know who Suffolk Public Schools is. Now, it is up to the board to determine if you're going to create a new vision, mission, and have new core values. That is totally up to the board to make that determination. But many organizations, when revisiting a strategic plan, they revisit their vision, mission, and core values to see if they're still in the same place and if it has the same direction and future visioning that it did the five years or 10 years before. In this timeline, as I stated, in October, you'll be provided with a list, a number of data points from our different strategic plan areas, and there are five of them. You'll be provided with that information and brought it to start working on the messaging because this process is all about the people. It's all about our citizens and what they want from our community for Suffolk Public Schools. What we're doing this evening is just a review of those three areas. This part of the process actually starts later, but as a board, as Dr. Gordon said, you all will be providing the example of what you're looking for from the public to share. Our current strategic plan ends in 2023. Another decision to make is when in 2023 you want to implement a new strategic plan, whether it will be a calendar year, an academic year, however you choose to do that. But it end, the current plan ends in 2023. Our mission has three points: to partner, to provide, and to prepare. I didn't read all of those statements intentionally because our mission, as we'll talk about, is what we do every day. We want to partner, we want to provide, and we want to prepare. And that's the focus of the mission area. Our vision, of course, we want Suffolk Public Schools students to become lifelong learners. That's our business. That's the focus of what we do in Suffolk Public Schools. We want them to be equipped. We want them to have the knowledge. We want them to have the attitudes to succeed as productive citizens in a global society. That's our future state. That's what we see for them. I'm somewhere. SPS visioning, and I just pulled this slide from our retreat slides, is our future preferred state, and I'll go into that a little bit more. But we want to remember to begin, as we do with any type of planning, if you're going on a trip, you know that, you know where you want to be. How you get there has variations. So we're looking at beginning with the end in mind. What do we want as the vision? That's the ultimate state we see for our school division. Where do we want to be? Where are we now? We have to look at that as we are addressing our vision statement and our future preferred state. And how do we want to be different than where we are eight to 10, from, from now to eight to 10 years from now? And it does provide us direction. So our mission gives us the why. Why do we do what we do? Why are we Suffolk Public Schools? Why do we educate students? Why do we want them to become lifelong learners? It guides our day-to-day operations. It's important that we not only understand this as leadership, but that every stakeholder understands why we do what we do. It's usually very brief.
Mrs. Storey? We are on television, are we not? Are we on television? Thank you. We are on television. We're going to be on YouTube. Thank you. And so anybody who wants to record it can record it, but please don't disrupt the meeting anymore. If you need some help with your technology, do you need some help? If you need some help, just raise your hand, but please don't disrupt the meeting anymore. Thank you.
Our mission really helps us to focus on what's most important to the division. I provided two examples from some of my favorite places, like Starbucks. If the mission is why we do what we do, Starbucks says it's to inspire and nurture. Those are key words for them. They want to do that for the human spirit, one person, one cup, and one neighborhood at a time. Simple, concise, and it gives their, it guides their day-to-day operations. TripAdvisor, as people are traveling, they want to help people. That's really the primary words, to help people. So what will be our focus when we, if you determine that you want to do a new mission statement? They want to help people around the world plan and have the perfect trip. That's their why. That guides them. That's what we're driven by. As you look at the, the vision statement, that's the, what do we want to be when we grow up statement? When we get five, 10, 15 years down the road, what do we want to look like? It's the future of our organization. It's inspirational and motivational. It gives people something to envision, to work towards. It serves as a guide for choosing current and future courses of action. If it's not directly aligned with our vision and it doesn't, it doesn't align with our day-to-day operations, which is part of our mission, then we need to reconsider if it's what we're supposed to do. Southwest Airlines, their, their vision is to be the world's most loved, most efficient, and most profitable airline. That's a simple vision statement, but it captures so much of what they do. Habitat for Humanity is another example. They want a world where everyone has a decent place to live. Do they have that right now? No, but that's what they're working towards. And so as we look at the possibilities of a new vision statement, we need to look at what do we want to work toward? What do we want to be? Values are what's important to us. What are our principles? What are our standards? What's important? How must we behave daily to achieve our vision? What are our commitments? And Etsy, I thought there's was a great example. It was five statements. We commit to our craft. We minimize waste. We embrace differences. We dig deeper. We lead with optimism. That's their values. That, when they do their work, that's what they value on a day-to-day basis. That's what they're committed to. So I ask of you, what core vocabulary will shape our approach? And I provided this example of just a business wordle, and it's actually from an ed-wordle, where it's a collection of all terms and vocabulary used by whoever did the wordle. And it's put together and shaped into a graphic. So I ask you all to provide me with words you wanted to see in your values, mission, and vision. Somewhere, those words should drive what you're doing. The reason for this... The reason for this is as we are planning and looking at how we're presenting to the community and our stakeholders, we want to help them see that there are some driving words. Now, they also will be able to provide us core vocabulary they want to see. And we'll align that, and you all can determine how you want to select that vocabulary, those statements, and things like that. But this will help shape our focus, the core words, the core statements. Where do we want to see ourselves? What's our vision? What's our mission? That's our why, our day-to-day. And then what do we value? So when I ask you all for your feedback, you did provide that. And so I just want to look at some of the words and statements that were selected that we want to see in our vision, mission, and values. And this is an ed-wordle. These are great to use in the classroom also with students as they see their, see themselves electronically. Nurturing, commitment, learning, family, listening, and none of these are bolded or larger for any rank order or anything like that. It's just how the wordle is created. Involvement by stakeholders, that's something we want. Excellence, partnerships, community, inspired, service, nurturing. Now, I, I didn't receive feedback from everyone, but from those I did, I do appreciate, these are the driving forces, the starter words for what we're going to do. So next step, as you all are preparing for the data review and how you're going to move the process, your messaging, how you're looking at the history, what are we, what are we proud of, and what are the things we're highlighting for Suffolk Public Schools? These terms and what you select as your core vocabulary will drive that. If we want community, what are some, what are some other things we want to look at for community? If we want excellence, how do we see ourselves excellent? How do we get there? How do we prepare others to see the vision and to help us in partnership with creating our next strategic plan? So if there are additional words, additional statements, as we prepare for next month, which would really, in the proposed plan, kick us off for the strategic plan process, as Dr. Gordon said, it would take 12 to 18 months to actually develop a full, a full strategic plan because of all the stakeholder groups and all the process components that will, will need to be involved. We need to commit to looking at the vocabulary, those statements, and what's important to us that will drive our vision, mission, and values. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Other questions, board members? There aren't any questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Board members, since there are no questions and we were able to get through the items, we are going to move on, and at this time, we're going to recess. There are no questions at this time? Yes. Board Member Store.
What happened to the CIP discussion?
That's going to be, I believe, under new business.
Thanks.
And I believe that's on the agenda that was posted. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Unfinished business.
Unfinished business. Look on your agenda. Thank you.
Huh? Yes, they didn't unmute it, so I just.
Yeah.
It had, um.
Well, stay after that one.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Suffolk Public School Board meeting. We're glad to have you here this evening. We thank you for your interest in the business of Suffolk Public Schools. As we begin this evening, we want to call this meeting to order, and we are going to ask Mrs. Philip Sparrow, our Vice Chair, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please, Laura and Philip.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a motion. We need a motion to approve our agenda, and I believe before we have that...
Yes, I'd like to add something to the agenda.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
A motion to add a resolution of the Suffolk School Board requiring all students participating in high school and middle school athletics and extracurricular activities to receive a COVID-19 vaccination and be subject to weekly testing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that students who participate in sports or other activities in the Suffolk Public Schools be vaccinated or be subject to weekly testing for participation. Other questions by board members?
I'd like to ask a question.
Board Member Story.
What accommodations are being made for students who've had the virus and have natural antibodies?
Madam Chair, currently this motion is just to add this to the agenda, but we can get into the discussion from Miss Story's question at a later time if that's okay when it's actually added to the agenda.
Yes. Other board members have questions? Thank you. Madam Chair.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Johnson?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
No.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved with that addition. That will be added as number seven under new business. At this time, we welcome citizen comments on agenda items. We will ask all persons who are in the chamber, and this is just a matter of business, we have a statement that we...
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Suffolk Public School Board meeting. We're glad to have you here this evening. We thank you for your interest in the business of Suffolk Public Schools. As we begin this evening, we want to call this meeting to order, and we are going to ask Mrs. Philip Sparrow, our vice chair, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please, Lord, you clear it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a motion. We need a motion to approve our agenda, and I believe before we have that--
Yes, I'd like to add something to the agenda.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
A motion to add a resolution of the Suffolk School Board requiring all students participating in high school and middle school athletics and extracurricular activities to receive a COVID-19 vaccination and be subject to weekly testing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that students who participate in sports or other activities in the Suffolk Public Schools be vaccinated or be subject to weekly testing for participation. Other questions by board members?
I'd like to ask some questions.
Board member Story.
What accommodations are being made for students who've had the virus and have natural antibodies?
Madam Chair, currently, this motion is just to add this to the agenda, but we can get into the discussion from Ms. Story's question at a later time, if that's okay, when it's actually added to the agenda?
Yes. Other board members have questions? Thank you. Madam Chair?
Board members, please vote. Board member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board member Johnson?
Yes.
Board member Mayo?
Yes.
Board member Riddick?
Yes.
Board member Story?
No.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed?
Thank you. The agenda has been approved with that addition. That will be added as number seven under new business. At this time, we welcome citizen comments on agenda items. We will ask all persons who are in the chamber, and this is just a matter of business. We have a statement that we make, but for all persons who are in the chamber, we are asking you, and I thank you as I look around the room for following our COVID precautions. Our city, we'll discuss it further, has extreme, we're in an extremely high area for COVID infections, so we're going to ask you to be sure to follow COVID precautions and keep your mask on when you come up to the mic. If you want to pull it down as you speak, that's fine, but please put your mask back on when you are finished speaking. I thank you for cooperating with that. If you do not, of course, we'll ask you, you'll be escorted from the room if you do not put your mask, keep your mask on when you're not at the mic. Thank you very much for your cooperation in advance. Madam Clerk, would you read?
It is the intent of the school board to ensure that the affairs of the board be conducted in an open and orderly manner, that all persons desiring to address the board are afforded an opportunity to do so. Any persons addressing the board shall, one, confine their comments to matters germane to the business of the school board; two, refrain from words or statements which, from their usual construction and common acceptance, are construed as insults and tend to incite violence or breach of the peace; three, refrain from obscenity, vulgarity, or other breach of respect; four, comply with the time limit for public comment as set by the board, which can be up to five minutes unless the board through the exercise of its discretion decides to allow less than five minutes for public comment; five, refrain from cumulative or repetitive remarks; and six, refrain from making any comments regarding any pending student discipline or employee grievance matters. The appropriate form for such matters is the applicable administrative hearing provided by state law or where appropriate court proceedings. The school board welcomes comments from the public as appropriate. Board members will listen to public comments but will not comment unless granted permission by the chair. The chairman or other presiding officer shall preserve decorum and shall decide all questions of public order subject to appeal to the board. At the request of the chairman, a city police officer shall act as sergeant-at-arms at all board meetings. The officer shall, under the direction of the chairman or other presiding officer, have charge of the board chambers, the board conference room, the waiting areas and corridors adjacent thereto, and the school administration building, and shall prevent disorder or interruption of the business of the board. Please state your name and address before speaking.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Denise Chapman, and she will address COVID and social distancing students in the classroom. Denise Chapman, would you please come forward? Is Denise Chapman outside? Are there any persons outside? No, okay. Terrence Parks would like to address virtual learning difficulties, confusion.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Terrence Parks. I come here to address the board about my concerns regarding the rollout of the virtual learning plan for this academic school year. It is my understanding now that an email was sent out the first week of June of this year regarding parents who wish to keep their children in a virtual learning environment. I will freely admit that I missed that email, but I'm also concerned that more diligence wasn't done to make sure that that information got put out sooner. I am well aware that the school board, when they really need to get attention of parents, they can do so either through emails and also robo-phone calls. I feel that more should have been done to ensure that the parents had enough time to get their children involved or enrolled in the virtual learning plan if possible. I'm also aware that currently there are still parents on waiting lists to get their children into a virtual learning environment. I believe that we've had enough time over the past year that more should have been done to ensure that that opportunity would have been afforded to every child without regards to a quota amount. I feel that right now, with the parents still waiting to get their children into a virtual learning environment, it's causing a lot of strain and a lot of worry, as we know that the COVID crisis is still amongst us right now. I just want my comments to be put on the record that I believe that more can be done in the future to address issues of this level of importance. I'm aware that school administrators statewide are doing everything they can to ensure the safety of the children, but I believe that they also should do everything they can to ensure that the parents have every opportunity and every means to keep their children as safe as possible by part of Suffolk Public Schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deborah Walstrom, who would like to address purchase cards, elimination of mid-year, and end-of-year exams, and collective bargaining.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
As you know, tonight, I am going to talk about three different topics, a few little notes on each, the first being the purchase cards. The August 27 purchase cards total over $226,000 for items that seem to be hidden from us. Citizens still cannot see what has been purchased with the purchase cards. I can tell that whomever uses these cards likes Chick-fil-A and Mo's Southwest Grill. I can also tell they like Sam's and Kroger and Walmart. Someone purchased items from American Refs Supplies, but because the purchase is secret, it's hard to tell if it's for refrigerators or referees. Amazon Marketplace continues to be problematic as citizens cannot tell what was purchased at Marketplace store number 299250N52, or any of the other marketing vendors. We're about nine months or so into asking for more transparency, and we are really wondering why this is so problematic. What is it you're hiding from us? The next topic is the elimination of mid-year and end-of-year exams. The school year has already begun. The student handbook with your grading expectations are already in student hands. Your policy, also with those expectations, is in place. Out of seemingly nowhere comes an ask for you to eliminate exams. Eliminating exams is a rookie move to try and boost student achievement. Eliminating exams is not something that should be done piecemeal and without consideration of all that is connected to making these exams go away. For example, there is nothing in the request that shows you how the grading will be done once you finish taking away the exams. What will be placed in the student handbook instead of what is there? What will this decision look like for students and teachers? What will the policy look like with the change? Where does the elimination of exams fit into the overall assessment plan for the school division? And the most basic question, when would this change be made? Another reason you have been given to eliminate exams is that staff want to encourage a focus on student growth and mastery of skills through smaller common assessments. Now, I'm not sure how you make an assessment smaller. You can make them shorter, but not usually smaller. It's not the removal of exams that moves a school division toward common assessments. Rather, it's the significant amount of work behind the scenes centrally, and then with teachers and administrators, about all that the common assessments entail. Changing assessment practice is commendable, but please allow staff the time to thoroughly plan down to the knowledge and skills for which they want to ensure mastery and growth. And my next topic is collective bargaining. I am glad you had additional information about collective bargaining, as it is important to know everything you can before making one of the biggest decisions related to finances that you will ever make. To date, I don't believe you have been given the full set of legal options for collective bargaining, including that you, as a board, can approve a resolution indicating that you will not authorize collective bargaining at this time. Rather than push through a controversial process and tool, take time and the leeway needed to learn the complexities of the collective bargaining process. I'm very concerned that Mr. Waller and Dr. Brown have already held behind-the-scenes discussions with potential employee groups, discussions that lay, discussions that lay an alarming precedence to the complex bargaining process, and discussions that by law cannot occur without board approval. Whether to bargain or not is a board decision and not the decision of one person on the board or that of the superintendent. I, for one, have not seen a public discussion or board vote, but somebody has allowed these illegal discussions to take place with employees. But who is allowing this? I've emailed the board chair three times with no response, and now assume either she or Dr. Gordon has put--
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I finish my sentence?
No, you may not. Your time is up. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, reports by the superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call Ms. Anthonet Ward, our community engagement officer, to the podium to provide the good news report, which will highlight SPS alumni, Your Voice's Power, our round-two finalists, our custodial collaboration, some highlights from SPS convocation, and I'm going to follow up with three parts of calendar special events, an update on the opening of school, as well as a concerning matter that's been brought to the office of the superintendent. Ms. Ward?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gordon. Good evening, Madam Chair, vice chair, and members of our school board. I want to start our good news report tonight with our SPS alumni highlights, which have resumed since the start of the new school year. So tonight, we're going to highlight Ms. Christina Burke. She is a 2000, class of 2006 graduate from Lakeland High School. Christina received her undergraduate degrees in geology and biology from William &amp; Mary, and her graduate degree from Marshall University in West Virginia. Christina has worked on grant bases at the Virginia Museum of Natural History in Martinsville, Virginia, and the Sternberg Museum of Natural History at Fort Hayes State University in Hayes, Kansas. She's now employed at the Harvard University Museum of Comparative Zoology. She encourages everyone to follow their dreams and to be stubborn when it comes to achieving those dreams. Christina has stayed strong, stubborn, and reached for the stars. She's living her dream as a paleontologist and doing what she has said she would do since she was in elementary school at Elephants Fork. Certainly another proud SPS alumni we have here. All right, tonight, we also recognize Ms. Anya Foster, a rising junior at Nansman River High School. Anya was selected out of thousands of entries into the coding and remix competition through yellow, so you might have remembered that from a few months back, the Ear Sketch Amazon Future Engineering Program. So she used Pharrell Williams' Song Entrepreneur and remixed it to demonstrate her skills in coding, music production, and social justice. Anya is a member of the Bela Voce, the women's choir at Nansman River, that piloted the Ear Sketch program in the winter of the school year 2020, 2021. Our custodians are truly the backbone of our school division. We want to give a special highlight on the collaboration demonstrated by a group of custodians who pulled together from four school locations to ensure that Nansman Parkway Elementary was ready to open its doors to students on September 7. You may have seen construction going on at the school's campus, and that's because Nansman Parkway underwent an HVAC renovation that took place all summer. The custodians completed eight weeks' worth of summer cleaning in one week after having the building dismantled, including all ceilings for HVAC equipment installation. I just want to read the names of the individuals out loud, and if you know them or cross paths with them, please let them know of the wonderful job they have done and how much they are appreciated within SPS. So we have Neil Williams, the head custodian at Nansman Parkway Elementary, Tremaine Boone, also from Nansman Parkway Elementary, Annette Copeland from Nansman Parkway, and Chris Chamber from Nansman Parkway, James Woodson from Nansman River, Eva Falk from Nansman River, Donnell Boone from Nansman River, and Theodore Vincent, also from Nansman River High School, along with Ms. Almanubi, Samuel Cheeks from John F. Kennedy Middle School, Abdul Jacobs, also from John F. Kennedy, Anthony Scott from Kingsfork High, and William Saunders from Kingsfork Middle. All right, so convocation, you can see a few photos here, was amazing. This year, we certainly were lit, which might I add here in SPS, "lit" stands for leadership, innovation, and teamwork. We did an SPS shuffle. We showed who really had the most spirit with our schools in department spirit contests, and shared why we loved Suffolk Public Schools. So we are creating a dynamic learning environment, and convocation this year truly set the tone. So I'm just sharing a few photos with you all. All right, and that concludes our good news report this evening.
Yes, Madam Chair, as we take a look at these pictures from SPS convocation, you know, we were so thrilled that we had 2,300 employees at Chartway Arena, and the division and school spirit was phenomenal. And as Ms. Ward mentioned, if you all remember, I actually recognized those custodians under Mr. Napier's leadership for their great teamwork with some of our authentic, brand-new SPS building, the best T-shirts. But that just really shows about the great climate and culture that we have in the school division and the overall teamwork. And you all have received several forms of communication, and the emails just thanking us for the opportunity to bring the entire staff together has been overwhelming, just so positive with the overall goal of motivating our staff for the first day of school. And we're just excited. It's going to be our plan to really do convocation about every two years. Dr. Branch and I have already booked 2023 at Chartway in the future with another opportunity to bring the team together. So before I go on to calendar special events, I wanted to show the board what you said.
Board members, would you like to make any comments? I was going to make comments at the end, but I think that some of us may wish to say something at this point.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say that the convocation was amazing. I'm so excited that we were invited to come. It made me feel like I was in my high school days again, when we marched in with the band. Everybody had a good time. There was nothing that caused any type of confusion. I think we did what we were supposed to do, and they were, as she said, they were lit. And the dancing, I did have to get some Bengay afterwards, but we had, we had a good time. And I even told Ms. Bowden when we marched in, I said, "No, I know you got a cane, but if you stop and twirl that cane, you'll just have the crowd." So thank you very much. Thank you very much, and I look forward to the next one.
Thank you so much. Board member Johnson?
Yes, I'd just like to say to anyone that has not ever had the opportunity to hear our superintendent speak, Dr. Gordon is an amazing motivational speaker. He has the, it's just an ability that it is immeasurable, and it is so valuable. And I have to tell you that we are so fortunate to have that in Suffolk Public Schools. I've listened to speakers across this country, and I can tell you that Dr. Gordon can match any one of them that I've ever heard.
Are there others who would like to speak now? Vice Chair Byram?
Yes. It was a blast, Dr. Gordon. You promised us it was going to be unusual, and it really was. And I think everyone enjoyed it. I didn't hear any bad remarks about it. And I really do appreciate the staff, all the time they devoted to, you know, getting all the plans in order and so forth. And I think it was much needed in our school system to start us off with a bang for this year. And I think it gave the employees-- And I think it gave the employees a little more motivation, and that's what we need. And I know when we hired Dr. Gordon back in October 2019, he promised me then he was going to be a great motivator, and he has kept that promise. And the staff appreciates that. I heard numerous principals and assistant principals and teachers comment that day on how uplifting it was to have a leader of your caliber. And I appreciate you, Dr. Gordon. Thank you.
Any other board members? Board Member Mayo?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, the Convocation was creative, energetic, and motivational. I thought back and better helped to set the tone for the school year. And yes, we do thank you, Dr. Gordon, for your leadership, and it took a lot of planning and effort to pull that off. And the atmosphere was electric. And we are very appreciative of that, and I thought it was a great start for the school year. I did receive some feedback from persons too, and they were very excited about being a part of that. It was like a big pep rally. So thank you so much. Great start for the school year.
Board Member Reddy?
It was a great experience. That was my first time attending an event such as that one. And the feedback that I received from the staff as they was heading back towards the buses, all of them had this one thing in common, and they said, "This is what we needed." It was an excellent boost so our staff could take off running to educate our students. And I want to commend Dr. Gordon and the entire administrative team and all those who had a hand in putting that event together. I want to commend the teachers and staff for following the rules and regulations. It was made very plain. You know, I even had one person who was, they didn't want to go at first. And at the end, the individual called me, and the individual stated that they glad that they went against their decision and came anyway because it was mind-blowing for them. So I look forward to the next Convocation as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Stewart?
Well, I would just say ditto to what everyone has said. It was a lot of fun, and I think the employees had a lot of fun. It was a big event to pull off, and so that was pretty amazing. So I would just ditto what everyone said.
Thank you. And I think I can only say thank you to everyone who participated in that, to organize something like that and to pull it off with no incidents. It was a wonderful event, and you could tell, from what I can only say, the spirit in the place was a positive spirit all over the place, and you could feel it. You could feel that our teachers, our custodians, our bus drivers, our staff, everyone in the room was excited about coming back to school and working with the children, and you could feel it. And that's the thing that made me feel good about what was going on in the room. I thought that everyone who was in the room felt it, and it was just a wonderful thing. I want to say at this point too, because I don't want to forget, the gifts that were given away. I want to recognize and acknowledge the person from our finance department who went around, what is her name?
Ms. Russell.
Ms. Russell, who went around and got gifts for us to give away that didn't cost us a cent. We didn't spend any money anywhere. On her own, she got people, businesses to give us those gifts so that we could give those things away to participants. It was a wonderful effort, and I wanted to commend her out loud in front of everybody because she didn't have to do that. But you could tell with the spirit in that place that people wanted this to come together in a positive way. And I was just so excited about everybody's efforts, the people who spoke, the people who walked around, the people who did the planning, and the people who participated. Every teacher at every school, every custodian, every bus driver, every clerical worker, everybody in our technology, any department that we had, school facilities all over the place. Everybody participated, and everybody participated, and everybody felt good about what they were doing. And we felt good about what they were doing. And so when our children came back, besides all the blunders that have been made and all the things that didn't go right, and they don't go right in the first couple of weeks of school, I just want to tell you that as a disclaimer, they don't. They don't usually go right. We're working on it. We're doing our best. Now, speaking of blunders, we did one thing. Mr. Al Wade, we missed him as a speaker, and we don't intentionally miss anyone. So Mr. Wade, would you come up to the mic because you signed up and did what you were supposed to do, and you want to speak to the board? So please do come forward, sir.
Yes, good afternoon, School Board. My name is Al Wade, as the chair indicated earlier. And I just wanted to add on to what Mr. Parks mentioned earlier in regards to the rollout of the virtual environment, learning environment. Just wanted to ask one additional question to that. If their parents indicated their intent during the survey that was done back in the early spring, why was an additional application needed? And the second question I have is, with COVID cases rising and teacher shortages, what is Suffolk Public School contingency plan in the event it's necessary to return all students to a completely virtual environment? And the second part of that question, at what point will the school board determine if conditions warrant a 100% online environment for the students? That's all I have, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. And we're going to go back to Dr. Gordon at this time, and there will be an answer for that question this evening. So I won't do that now, because we don't normally do that, but there will be an answer for that question this evening, so please stick around.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to turn our attention to our calendar of special events. National Grandparents Day is coming up next week, September 12th. Constitution Week is September 17th through the 23rd. National Fire Prevention Week is coming up, October 3rd through the 9th. National School Lunch Week is October 11th through the 15th. Our next school board meeting is on October 14th. And to bring attention to the board, that October is also Bullying Prevention, Disability Awareness, and National Principals Appreciation Month. So these events are coming up in the next couple of weeks. Madam Chair, as I stated, I want to talk about a couple of items, which will also probably address a couple of the questions from Mr. Wade, to provide the board and our school community with an update on the opening of school. So we were very happy on Tuesday to welcome back 14,106 students to Suffolk Public Schools. Today is now Thursday. The number is now 14,200 and something. So people are still enrolling in SPS. We made a lot of contingency plans with safety protocols and mitigation being our primary factors to open up school. And as we have stated on several of our meetings, as well as on my Facebook Live that occur right before school, you know, our primary goal is to keep students safe, staff safe, and then to instruct them secondarily. As we're looking at things, there's some things unfortunately that the school division could not plan for, such as the first day of school, having six bus drivers call out sick, when we already had a bus driver shortage of only five, which is pretty minor compared to a lot of other school divisions in the region. But if you take into consideration that each bus driver does three routes, that means that's an additional 18 double-ups that had to occur for Ms. Young in the Transportation Department. We're working through that. The second thing is I understand that parents have hesitation about putting their students on the bus because of the closed-in space for the potential spread of COVID-19, which has increased our student drop-off and pickup lines tremendously. At the elementary level, for example, or just across the school division, in most cases, we're looking at five times as many parent and student drop-offs. However, at schools such as Hillpoint Elementary and Kings Fork High School, we're looking at 10 times as many parent drop-offs. So entire school administration, the Transportation Department, and the police have worked very closely with us to try to figure out some of different strategies that we can use to try to alleviate some of that. But here is where I need the city of Suffolk, as well as our constituents and our parents' help. Our administration at each building has developed a parent pickup and drop-off plan that must be followed to the T. When we get impatient and decide to drive around cars or to drive into the bus loop and to do other things such as that, we're causing safety hazards. We've had accidents near our schools. We actually had an accident on school property. We've had staff that has not been able to get into school in the morning because parents have doubled up in some lines. When the school division, for example, plans for 75 parent pickups and drop-off, but then on the first day of school, there's 350, there are adjustments that need to be made. And the biggest concern, of course, that we're seeing is the late arrival times of our elementary babies, which is in Tier 3 in the afternoon. When we have delays at high school or middle school during the day, during the afternoon, that then triggers an additional delay at our elementary levels. Now, what I can report to you is that each day is gotten a little bit better. It's gotten a little bit better. We have drivers that will be returning from FMLA. We have three or four drivers that are currently being trained, and hopefully those other drivers that were sick will come back to work tomorrow. These are some of the things that we're looking forward to do, as well as Dr. Rice has already been in contact with Suffolk Police Department so that we can add additional officers and a crossing guard at Hillpoint Elementary School. As soon as we get feedback from the observers, from our central office staff, as well as administrators and teachers, the school administrator's office, which is all about service, will jump into action. But I have to remind everyone, just like I did in July and August and on Facebook Live, you must be patient. This is different. This is different. Anytime you have that volume of parents taking their kids to school, and not to mention the fact that we also have had two times and three times as many walkers to school in neighborhoods such as Hillpoint, that causes some issues. But we're going to work through it. So I'm asking for the next couple of weeks that our entire school community to please be patient. I'm also asking to make sure that everyone remembers that our buses are back on the road. 14,000 students, more high school kids are driving now as well. We need to make sure that we do everything that we can to protect our students and our staff as they're coming to school. Now, to address some of the questions that came from our latest citizen speaker, the main reason why when we sent out the SPS Online survey was to trigger a email pattern and thread that allows us to identify which parents are actually interested in SPS Online. That came out, and then based on that email, that allowed the Teaching and Learning Department to be able to determine who to send an application process to, which was also advertised on our SPS website. Based on the feedback that we got from that, we actually were enrolling people in SPS Online all the way up through the end of July, and then I made the executive decision to cut it off in the middle of August because we have to plan for the master schedule. That is the key. The Virginia Department of Education has actually allowed us to go up to 35 students per class virtually, but I did not want the number to be that high. Now, I can say that Mr. Steve Smith, Associate Principal at the middle school level, has worked tremendously to get students off the waiting list. Same thing with Dr. Shaka Miller at the high school level, but we have more people that are enrolling each day, inquiring about it each day. And we understood that that was going to be a process, but we also understand that there's a national teacher shortage, so I can't create a class if I don't have a teacher. At the secondary level, we wanted to make sure that we had options, edge annuity, just a little bit different than what we've done in the past, proximity learning, Virtual Virginia, and of course, our own SPS Online model, because we knew that there could potentially be an increase. However, we have to be patient to determine if people want to come out. We are now in the process of trying to create additional sections with a meeting that we actually have tomorrow, looking at the master schedule at every school to determine, especially at the secondary level, if we can condense or eliminate some sections that have sparse enrollment to create additional online sections. But again, it takes some time. So we want to continue to ask our parents and our students to be very, very patient. When we get angry, it's not going to solve anything. But if we continue to collaborate and have communication, we're going to continue to try to do whatever we can to make it work. Now, my last thing, Madam Chair, that I need to talk to you about and the entire board and the public about, is I'm extremely concerned about a continued violation of norms and protocols by Board Member Sherri Story. This week, we have had issues where I've had two principals that have been deliberately targeted by Ms. Story for issues questioning their leadership. We have also had Ms. Story violate norms and protocols by visiting a school and not walking around the school with administration, actually coming into an issue with a teacher, and just some other things that we really need to talk about because for two years, it'll be two years, October 19th, there seems to be this constant conflict of what needs to happen in Suffolk Public Schools. And I'm pretty much to the point where us being defensive about everything that occurs is no longer going to occur. So Madam Chair, I'm asking for a meeting to be set up at the earliest convenience possible with Ms. Story amite, as well as you to be the witness, potential mediator, so we can resolve some of these issues. And I also want to say that usually when I bring concerns to the board in reference to Ms. Story, there's some level of retaliation that normally occurs. And I want to go on record of saying that we are concerned about that, not only for myself, but also for the other principals that have been targeted this week, questioning their leadership, as to me is really all about respect, collaboration, and teamwork. So I want to put that on the record. We can have a conversation offline, Ms. Story, Dr. Buck, to potentially set up a meeting, but I need this to end today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We are at this point, let me just say, I was going to say this for my comments, board members, all board members. We were informed of our COVID protocols, I believe it was last month. The superintendent informed us that no visitors, none whatsoever, should be in the school buildings, except in the lobby area and in the office. None without an administrative escort. That means a principal or assistant principals will take you wherever it is you're supposed to be in the building, unless there's an activity going on. For example, the southwestern opening, we were escorted, but of course, we were with the principal escorted to where the event was taking place. Let me make this very clear so that there is no question about what that meant. If anyone, anyone, be it board member, public citizen, whomever, we have COVID protocols, enters a school building, the principal is responsible for the school building. If you are not escorted by an administrator, principal, or assistant principal, or the designee of the principal, to another place in the building, you will be escorted by security out of the building. School board member, anyone else, those protocols go for anyone. You do not roam around the building, go into the classrooms. Now, I have not said this, but I think it's clear that we need to, and we need to make this clear. There are, as far as I know, because I know your backgrounds, two people who are school board members who are licensed administrators in Virginia, me and Mrs. Mayo. And we don't serve in that role anymore, so that's not what we do. But we did indeed have the credential to be principals and the qualifications, and I had the license, Mrs. Mayo qualified for it. I don't know if she ever applied for it, but as superintendents as well. The bottom line is, that's not the role we serve as school board members. Our role is policymaking and governance, not administration. We had a workshop on that. We know what it is we're supposed to do, and we know what it is we are not supposed to do. Our role, and I'm saying this publicly because I want our administrators and our staff to understand this, is not to go into buildings and try to tell teachers, administrators, or anyone else what to do or how to do their jobs. I cannot make it clearer than that for anybody on this board. And we should know better. Anybody, we should know better. We've had the training. We know what it is we're supposed to do. We are adults, and we need to carry ourselves in a manner that exemplifies what we've been trained to do as school board members. Now, I have no problem with a meeting, Dr. Gordon. It's just a matter of us trying to arrange it so that we can discuss this, and I think it would be appropriate for our attorney to be present as well. Let's go on to the next agenda item, the calendar of special events. Thank you. Oh, board members?
Madam Chair, I approve that we accept the consent agenda.
I second the motion, Madam Chair.
Other questions? Thank you. Madam Clerk?
I just need to bring to you all's attention that there was a correction made to one of the memos under the consent agenda for the Office of Student Services, and that is on- the memos under the consent agenda for the Office of Student Services, and that is on the, you know, each member got a copy of it.
Okay.
And I'll be uploading the correction.
Okay. There was a typo on the, on, and you have an item that says corrected copy.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Johnson?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Yes, Dr. Gordon has an announcement to make, which is an announcement that's related to our personnel report, an introduction, actually.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to introduce to the Suffolk Public Schools community and our school board our new supervisor of advanced instruction in rural languages, Ms. Tanika Ricks, if you want to come to the podium, Ms. Ricks. Ms. Ricks is currently working on her doctor of education at Liberty University. She also already has a degree as an educational specialist from Liberty, post-masters from George Washington University, a master of education from Cambridge College, a bachelor of science from Bluefield. She was formerly director of gifted and exceptional education for Franklin Public Schools, and I believe she says she will be joining us on September twenty-seventh. She's filling the vacancy by Mr. Jones, who left her to move his family to Chesapeake. We are so excited that Ms. Ricks is joining our team, and we'll give her a couple of moments to address the board.
Yes, thank you, sir. Thank you, board members, Dr. Gordon, and all faculty, staff that's assembled here, and all parents and community members. I'm grateful for this opportunity. I'm looking forward to continuing the great work that's been going on here for Suffolk Public Schools. I'm grateful, again, I'm excited about starting, I can't wait to work with the great team. I've met the team, some of the team members throughout our interview process, and it's been great, and they've been welcoming and supportive, and I'm looking forward to getting here as fast as I can, September the twenty-seventh, and again, keep the great work that's going on here in Suffolk Public Schools. And thank you again for this opportunity.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We're going to go on to the next agenda item, which is our unfinished business, and that is our capital improvement plan. Dr. Gordon, would you give us a little intro?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. So the board actually has a school board member worksheet, as today is the day, based on the presentations that Ms. Forrester and Mr. Napier provided to the board last month, that we're going to ask for your direction for the order of our capital improvement plan. On your worksheet that you have in front of you, you can see the current priority in the left-hand column, the projects such as major systems repair being number one, and we, this needs to stay number one, because that's what we use to repair our schools and facilities, and et cetera, going all the way down. Mr. Napier and Ms. Forrester have also included information from our facility conditions index, which also goes back to our last meeting. It is our goal to be able to present this information to the city. Next week, we will send it to Almore and the city's finance office so that they will have it for their planning commission meetings, as well as subcommittees, to be a part of the city council CIP, which I believe is usually voted on in February. So at this point in time, we want to open it up, Madam Chair, for discussion from the board, and if Ms. Forrester and Mr. Napier have anything to add, we can do that during this discussion. But at this time, we want to ask the board to help us rank your priority for which school facilities need to be improved or renovated, based on the current priority on the left-hand column, and again, what you all are going to settle on for our recommendations for this year for the CIP.
Board members, at this point in time, I want you to look at, there is our current draft is in your notebook. We have, I believe this, the one that is in your notebook, and I'll hold it up hopefully, is, should be on your, this is what you should be looking for on your page, it should look like this, the former sheet that we had. Oh, I'm sorry, should be in, should be on your, it should be on your, because I don't, I don't want you to write down something that, that is not there, that you don't see.
What are you looking for there?
It should be in ESB, should be on your computer. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mrs. But it should be the form that looks like this.
Mm-hmm. That's on ESB.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The priorities that we have, isn't that what we decided earlier in this order? December of twenty twenty? February third, twenty twenty-one, and again. Okay. I recall we had a discussion, a very lengthy discussion about this, and made a decision about our priorities in regard to this plan, and so what we have in front of us on this worksheet, these are the priorities. Am I correct?
That's your current order.
Okay.
And so now you have the flexibility, if you want to change that order, as this was what we submitted last year to the city.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yes, I had a change of heart. I would like for us to move John F. Kennedy Middle School to number two on our CIP. And my reason for being is, our primary job is to facilitate education. We could rent a warehouse, but we cannot rent another school. And the current state of John F. Kennedy Middle School, we, we know the story, we've seen the study. And I'm just asking that the board would support that to move it to number two, because it does need to move up on our priority list, as well as the City of Suffolk's priority
Madam Chair? Yes. I agree that John F. Kennedy should be the priority, because we're talking about, what, six, eight hundred students, and they just cannot, whether they be there or not, we cannot keep opening up a school for our students, that one of the priorities on their list of things they need could be rain boots because of the flooding that goes on in the school constantly, especially with the weather that we have here. I have nothing against any other, others listed, but I just believe John F. Kennedy should be a priority. It keeps getting put back, and I don't think we should be putting it back any, any further. I think the project for John F. Kennedy begins in twenty twenty-three. It's going to take three years to, before the school would be finished or ready to open anyway. So it would be, if you moved up John F. Kennedy in front of, say, the operations center, because that's what you're talking about, you couldn't move it up to number two, which, because we have to move hazardous waste, isn't something you could move out of the way, that's something you have to do. You don't have a choice with that, nobody can stay in school with hazardous waste. So that's not something that we could move out of the way. If you mean three, that's a school two, whose students are, and that's been moved back for years and years, nine years since I've been on the board. But it's not that you couldn't do that and John F. Kennedy, we've had that discussion as well. So I think that all three of those projects begin the same year. And I, I think as well, the operations center is one, the project with the operations center influences not just Freney Avenue, but also what happens to Driver Elementary School as well. So we have Freney Avenue we're using, and when we talk about then renting some more space for storage, we have Driver Elementary that we're holding up, that we could turn over to the city, so we could get rid of two things that we're using instantly, but one and two don't seem to be things that we could move anyway. Those are things that we have to have. Mr. Napier?
Yes, ma'am. If I could just make a suggestion, items one and two, those are annually funded items.
Right.
They're not actual projects. We suggest that you combine those two, make that number one, and then start your projects at item number two.
And just to add to that, Madam Chair, that's actually how the city appropriated that when Mr. Moore took over as city manager. They combined the hazardous materials of seventy-five thousand with the major systems repair, so it's now annually three point five seven five, as you can see across the top, in ESB, and what we showed last month, that combines number one and two.
Right, that combines it anyway. Okay.
So, Madam Chair, this, this is the sheet we should be using?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, Madam Chair, I want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. So if our current priority, numbers one and two, is consolidated, that means Northern Shores would automatically move up to number two. So my, my question, my request stands, as I initially stated, that we make John F. Kennedy our number-two priority, since the city has already consolidated the operations facility and the major systems and repair, and that's number one, so that we just shift John F. Kennedy ahead of Northern Shores and those other projects.
Well, I guess my question would be, Mr. Riddick, since all three of those would start, all four of those would start the same year, what would be the point?
From-
If you look in that column of twenty twenty-three, all three of those projects would start the same year.
From my conversations, Madam Chair, that I've been having, I don't think we're going to get all three of those projects. If I have to put my chips on one project and be satisfied with getting one of the three, I would be satisfied with getting John F. Kennedy. Northern Shores, to me, could be solved by rezoning. Elementary schools can be rezoned to get rid of the mobile units, and I believe we do have the capacity when we have schools such as Booker T. with three hundred students versus Northern Shores, who may have seven or eight hundred students. But if we rezone and reshift, I believe that could Band-Aid that for a while, but we cannot continue to Band-Aid JFK. I believe our council was clear in their comments and actions regarding to the fact that we, we're not going to get all three at one time. So I think we should push for a new middle school.
I, I'm going to, as I say it, well, I'll tell you what. Anybody else have any comments? Because I'm not going to, the folks at Northern Shores have waited and waited and waited on that same council that made promises to them that they were going to do something. And of course, that's my area. There is no just rezoning that's going to solve that problem, because the kids in Northern Shores cannot be rezoned somewhere else, because there's nowhere else that's close to Northern Shores to send them to. Booker T. is not close to Northern Shores, and driving them from Northern Shores to Booker T. won't solve the problem. We just alleviated the problem at Creekside, that was also overcrowded by building Florence Bowser, so the kids shifted down to, from Creekside to Florence Bowser. Florence Bowser now would have to shift down to somewhere else, somebody else would have to shift down to somewhere else. We have a school that's new enough so we can make an attachment to it while it's new enough, and the attachment, making an attachment to it would logically seem to be cheaper than waiting until the school gets old, we have to tear it down and build something else. But at any rate, I would suggest that we follow through with what we ask for. Now, we can vote on it as a board, and that's what we're supposed to be doing tonight. We can do whatever it is we need to do, but if there's more discussion, I will hold my discussion, because that's my opinion. Madam Chair? Board Member Johnson?
Yeah, first of all, Mr. Napier, could, could you tell me where we are on the operations facility? I see it was twenty-two, twenty-three, was five point five million?
We haven't begun phase two yet.
That's what I thought.
There was no funding.
So that year, we have to kind of look at, that didn't happen.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and can I add to that, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Napier? So if we remember from, from last presentation that Ms. Forrester and Mr. Napier did, these were the asks, what we have in ESB, the color-coded version were the asks of the school board, but starting operations center phase two was not approved by the city. So the years that you all are seeing on your color version is what you asked for in December of twenty twenty, but if you remember from last month, there's a multi-year discrepancy or difference between when these projects would actually start. What we're asking from you all as the board tonight is for us to be able to start things in twenty twenty-three. That would be the first year that we would be able to start any project. And one of the concerns that Mr. Napier, Ms. Forrester, and I have is, when you see a school such as John F. Kennedy Middle School being stretched out over three years, it's not going to take three years to build John F. Kennedy Middle School. We're talking three to six months' worth of design work and twenty months for the school, depending on when you start it. That's a factor, depending on when you start it. So we, we would need basically the complete order, and, and I'm, Ms. Forrester, Ms. Napier, and I are willing to assist the board, but we would need the complete order, and I think one of the things, to Mr. Riddick's point, that we may have to take a look at, is how many projects are we doing each year? We know that the city has given us numbers in the past of approximately fifteen million that they're winning, willing to spend each year, just to make sure they keep their triple-A bond rating. We're looking for some flexibility in that. I can share with you all in my conversations with Almore and the meetings that Mr. Napier and Ms. Forrester and I have had with the city, they do want to hear from the board right now for your top three priorities. Then, after we get the top three priorities, then I'm going to ask you all, based on what you did last year, again, what's currently on the CIP worksheet, if you want to continue with that order, if there are any other adjustments to make. And so to summarize right now, we have Mr. Riddick and Ms. Jenkins asking for JFK to be the first school facility project to occur. Dr. Brooks-Buck has stated that she would like Northern Shores Elementary to remain where it is as the first school project to occur. So I want to try to summarize as we go on to make sure that we can keep the process moving.
I want all of the projects to remain as they are, and I want them to remain as they are, because I believe that a change is not going to help us. If the city is going to do what they said they were going to do, they're going to do it. If they are not, it's not that anyone has promised and kept their word that they're going to do John F. Kennedy. We have heard these promises, I don't know how many years now, I've been on the board, nine years. John F. Kennedy has been leaking for how many years?
Thirty.
No, more than that. You taught there in nineteen seventy-five, and you taught there-
Seventy-six, seventy-seven.
And no, it's not been a secret. And nobody's made a promise that they've kept. So I'm trying to figure out the point of rearranging, and if, you said fifteen million dollars is the top, if fifteen million dollars is the top, the best we could do is John F. Kennedy, which would be, according to this, twelve point five million dollars, and maybe college and career academy, and nothing else. So we'd still be at Freney Avenue, and we would still be with part of the building done at Mount Zion, which they were working on before I came on the school board in twenty thirteen.
Madam Chair?
So I'm just, I'm just asking. Yes, sir. Mr. Riddick?
I just would like to reiterate this here. As you just explained, John F. Kennedy has had a problem for a long time. How can we continue to ask the city to pay attention to our needs when we know we have that- when we know we have that building that needs immediate attention? And we sit and allow it to stay as priority number four, when I believe it should be priority number two? When I spoke to rezone, and I use for an example the disparity in our student attendance at our schools. Logistically, it wouldn't be sound to send students from Northern Shores to Booker T., but I wanted to point that out. What would I would recommend happen, but I don't want to interfere with the day-to-day operation, would be the students from downtown Suffolk that goes to Florence Bowser would then be moved to schools such as Nazman Parkway. The students from Lake Kennedy that goes to Nazman Parkway can easily take the two-minute ride to Booker T. And then the extra room you have in the northern end could be shipped up there. I mean, we paid for a study to tell us how to get rid of the mobile units. So it can be done. But we cannot continue to send our students to a school that we have to patch. As Mr. Napier and the engineers have stated, the HVAC at JFK is at the end of its life. If we prolong this longer, we're going to have to pay for new HVAC on a school that needs to be torn down. And then the cost applications that go along with this, it increased. What was the figure that you all said?
Seventeen percent.
Seventeen percent per year?
Not this year.
What, not this year?
We escalated seventeen percent this year. The following year, 21. Following that, 24. Year four, 28 percent.
So when we do the math, it's better in the best interest of our taxpayers to build a new school first before we do the addition because the longer we wait to do the bigger project, the more money we're going to spend in the long run. So I'm just begging all of the board members up here, please. And if they don't follow through with it, we got a different remedy for that. But we need to make John F. Kennedy our priority because our kids cannot continue to learn in that type of environment.
Mr. Riddick and board members, we at this time have had this discussion. And I think we've extended it further than it should go. Are there other members with comments with regard to this? Because we've had this and...
Yes?
I just have a question. On the 20-month construction for JFK, does that include time for engineering fill?
That is actual construction. It'll probably take us six months or so, Mr. Napier, for design and engineering?
We have a prototype school.
Right.
Fred Cherry. If we utilize that prototype plans, what normally would take us 12 months to design, I feel certain we could do it at most six to seven months, which saves us a lot of time. So we could speed that process along, probably close to six months. If weather is good, we may be able to cut off. We can fast-track a lot of construction if the weather cooperates. That is always a possibility. But it really does save us time, and it saves us money to use a prototype set of plans.
And that will be the recommendation that I would probably give to the board, depending on who we use as our architects, that we use prototypes for some of the more recent schools that we've built. As you heard Mr. Napier say, that actually cuts our timeline down significantly on the design process. And so usually, for a middle school, 20 months. Same thing pretty close for elementary. High schools, 26 months.
What would we do? Because I'm thinking from the two board members I've heard from. One, we have no guarantee that anybody's going to give us any money to do anything. That's one. Two, from the board members I've heard from, you want the school in the same place. Three, how long is it going to take us to fill the swamp, to make that land possible to build a school on?
I can address the bowl issue. We had the exact same problem at Florence Bowser. It added zero months to the time of construction because that just became a part of the site package when we built that school was to do whatever was necessary in terms of stormwater management. And the same thing would happen at John F. Kennedy. So I don't think anything that would have to be done, as far as site work, I don't think that is going to prolong the total construction schedule. All of that gets calculated in from the beginning anyway.
Okay, so you think you could do that in that place, and the water issue there would only be like a pond, a retention pond, like you did at Fred Cherry? You think that all you could do is a retention pond behind the houses that are there in front of John F. Kennedy?
Well, we'd have to talk to civil engineers, but that's certainly one option, a retention pond somewhere. They have the capability and the technology now to place retention ponds underneath parking lots. There's a whole lot of things they can do now to mitigate that water issue, just as we did. And that was the solution at Bowser. We have a two-acre retention pond. And all the water that used to sit around that school now runs into that retention pond.
And that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that is one option.
And the water issue that's at Cherry with the pond, and Cherry has a retention pond in front of it?
Cherry has three. There's one in front, and there's two in back.
Mm-hmm.
So there are ways that they can mitigate that issue. Generally, retention ponds are what's used.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So, and we have some. If we change all of this, then somebody is suggesting that that's going to make a difference in what the city has promised to give us? Is that what we're supposed to be believing now?
No, I can't address that.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Right.
That's what I'm thinking. Now, we're going to, we're going to...
Point of privilege because...
Sir, I'm sorry, Mr. Riddick, but I have extended this conversation further than I should have.
Okay, well, I'm going to just have to be out of order right here. I want to clarify this.
Wait, wait just a minute. Mr. Riddick?
If we as a board, I, I, I contempt me. If we as a board say that this school is dilapidating and falling, and it's priority number four on our list, it's not matching up. That's all I want to say.
Mr. Riddick, we have heard you, we have heard you. We have heard me too much. And we've heard me too much and you too much. And if other board members have nothing to say, we need a motion. We need an order.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, so based on the discussion, we're really looking at two options here.
Well, we need to know if you want to keep the plan we already have or if you want to change the order of the schools. Do you want to keep the plan we already have? And we need to make clear what that is. And that would be to maintain the order we already have, which would be the major systems replacement, which is there, and that would be combined with, I want to make sure I'm saying this correctly, the hazardous material management. We want then the operations facility at Mount Zion, Northern Shores Elementary, the addition to the building, the College and Career Academy completion, and John F. Kennedy for 2023-24. This is just beginning, all four of the projects. The Freney Avenue ending, and that would mean that we also dispose of driver. That's not on here, but we'd get rid of driver if we did that. And that would be taken care of in 2022-23. Now, am I correct in what I'm saying?
We would have to move everything one year because remember, this is again what you all asked for this current year. So everything would start in 2023.
So that would be moving over to 2023-24. And then we're shifting over to 2024-25, the next four projects. So we would be asking for four things at one time. And then we'd be shifting everything over one year. If you look at in your book, if you look at what you have in your computer or if you have the sheet that I have, you'd be shifting everything over one year. But you'd be maintaining the order that we have right now. Okay? If you want to keep the order that you have, that would be option one, keeping the order you have. Option two would be changing the order. Mrs. Storey, did you have your hand with you?
Yes, I did.
Go right ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm for moving Nazman River High School addition up.
Okay.
I think they're very overcrowded. And I would like to see that addition as a smaller one. I would like to see that addition done at the same time Northern Shores is done. And I think that we should take our time or we should have a special meeting. And this should be laid out so we can see this on paper and even shift some of these things around on a whiteboard. We've got abilities to do that. But just putting it out here, and we think we have it all right in our head, and then vote on something that not everyone is straight on. To me, that's a bad idea. This is, this is a lot of money, and it's very important. And I think there's a lot of different combinations and ideas that could work. And I certainly don't think Nazman River should be way on the bottom, considering how full they are. So I just would like to see us meet when we have time. I don't think discussion should be curbed. I think we all have and should brainstorm some ideas and be able to work on this. This is important, and our constituents have a lot to say about this. And I don't like to see any board member cut off and be inhibited from discussion. This is really important. So unless the votes have already been decided behind the scenes, I really think that this is worth having a work session over. I think that we should play around with different combinations. And that would be my recommendation. And like I said, I would like to see the, I would like to see the high school moved up.
Madam Chair?
Let me address this.
Sure.
Last month's work session was on the CIP. So we had a work session last month on the CIP.
Well, it sounds like we should have another one because we're not decided.
And you missed that one. We don't have meetings behind closed doors to make decisions. So please don't put that out there because it's just not true. The board has had all this month to look at this, to make a decision about what they wanted to do. What would be your recommendation, if you have one, regarding Nazman River moved up? And where would you like for it to be moved to? Again, we have looked at this from, we met December?
I think it can be put ahead of CCAP. I think it could be put ahead of the facility, operations facility. I think that Northern Shores and the high school should be together, both of those additions. I think it's doable, and city would approve it.
Okay, so you think that Northern Shores and Nazman River?
Should be two and three.
Two and three, thank you.
Should be two and three. Now, Dr. Gordon has given every board member a worksheet, a CIP worksheet that looks like this. So I'm thinking, a good way to do this then is to fill out your worksheet and pass them in. And Mrs. Hicks?
And Ms. Gardner.
And Ms. Gardner will come and pick them up from where you are. Let's do this.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
My only concern here is that, as I look at this, and if you just pick the third year, we're asking for like 52 million, which we know will never happen.
Mm-hmm.
So by asking for a lot of things that we know are never going to happen?
Right.
What are we truly accomplishing here?
I have no idea.
Amen.
And Madam Chair, just as a reminder, we have to submit this to the city by September 23rd, which is the reason why we brought it to the board last month for decision this month.
Right.
So it is decision time? Yes, would you put your name on the worksheet?
Madam Chair?
Yes. Put your name on your worksheet, please. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. On our current priority?
Current priority?
Item one and two?
Item one and two?
Is merged together?
Yes, but you could just, you could just do one through 11. Don't worry about it. We know it's going to be merged together. So just do one and two, leave it up there, and you'll start with three. So if you want John F. Kennedy to be three, then you put a three beside John F. Kennedy in the right column, in the right-hand column.
Okay, so my question is, despite what, despite what we do today, this operation facility and Mount Zion replacement is going to happen?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry.
Because when we say merged together, and we know that the city, it gives us X amount for the major systems and repairs, that's what comes to mind.
I think you guys are looking at two different sheets.
I said that wrong.
Yeah, okay.
One is one, two can be John F. Kennedy, if you want it to be John F. Kennedy.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. While they are doing that, we could be doing something else. No, we may. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move forward with the meeting while they're calculating, uh, so that we can, we won't hold the public up and the meeting up and everybody else. Um, thank you for your patience. We're going to move forward with the next items on the agenda. Um, while we're waiting for the calculations, when we complete the calculations, they'll let me know, and then we'll start up again and go back there and make you aware of what the decisions are. Okay, uh, all right, the next item on the agenda. V S B A Advocate for Education Award nomination.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I believe that, that is what I've wanted for new business. Um, there is a V S B A Advocate for Education Award that is eligible, and I am asking that we nominate our chair, Dr. Judith Brooks-Buck, for it. And before I make the, that emotion, I'd like to just say to the public that she has public, been a public school advocate for 50 years, beginning as a special education teacher, an administrator, principal, educational consultant, and a college professor. She's worked in four states, West Germany, and six African nations. She's now our school board chair, has a PhD from UVA, and has worked tirelessly with local, state, and federal workers for, not only just for Suffolk Public Schools, but for the 90% of American students that go to public schools today. So for that reason, I would ask that we would nominate Dr. Judith Brooks-Buck for the V S B A Advocate for Education Award.
Second.
Thank you. Are there questions? Madam Clerk.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Johnson?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story? Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passed.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Our next, uh, award or recognition is a certificate. Board Member Jenkins, would you come forward? Board Member Jenkins, would you come over here? And I guess we're going to have, should we go down there? Okay.
Ms. Ward. It's a full opportunity here, please.
This is a certificate of appreciation from the Virginia School Boards Association, in appreciation of Karen L. Jenkins for serving as a member of the 2021 V S B A Audit Committee. I just want to thank you for serving and representing us, the Suffolk School Board, showing us what you can do, your many talents, and of course, serving on our behalf, serving your community, serving our schools, and doing a great job representing us, as always. Thank you, Karen, for the hard work that you do. All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, I believe this is going to be Dr. Rice. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call Dr. Suzanne Rice, Chief of Administrative Services, to the podium. She's going to give our monthly S P S Health Dashboard Update. Dr. Rice?
Thank you, Dr. Gordon, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, board members. Uh, this evening, I am going to bring you some updates on where we are currently with COVID-19 in the city of Suffolk. Um, so as you can see here with the metrics where we currently are, the asterisk is to remind you there at the top that we did make some changes based on what Virginia Department of Health did on reporting the transmission as the rates are concerned. Uh, prior to August 2nd, we were looking at a rate, which was a formula per 100,000. But now what we're doing is we're, we're reporting out the new cases for the past seven days. And so that's what this new number represents when we talk about the rates at the top per 100,000. So as you can see, uh, currently, we are sitting in the red. Um, and the numbers you can see are 301 new cases and 18.4%. That's our current transmission in the city of Suffolk. This slide here is just to give you a quick snapshot of where we are with some vaccinations. This is the vaccination coverage for folks in the city that have one dose. Uh, so that gives them some coverage, but certainly not fully vaccinated. Um, I'll just point out two statistics at the bottom. The school age group on the far left at the bottom with one dose is about 47.6%. And then 18 and above, we're looking at around 63.4%, uh, one dose, that is. This slide here, however, shows us the coverage with fully vaccinated folks. Um, with this, you know, two doses of the Moderna or the Pfizer, two weeks after that, or the one dose of the Johnson &amp; Johnson, two weeks after that. So again, I pointed that same two, uh, groups, the 12 to 17-year-olds, those are eligible. We're looking at 37.3% fully vaccinated. And then 18 and above, we're looking at 55.5% fully vaccinated in the city of Suffolk. This is, uh, the guidance that we are going to use, of course, to decide along with the local department of health on whether we probably need to do any kind of virtual, uh, setting for a classroom, perhaps a school. Um, the criteria that we're looking at would be the transmission that's happening in individual schools, uh, the absenteeism rate for students, and then the staff capacity. And when we talk about that staff capacity, we're not just talking about teachers here. This is for operations purposes. So for example, bus drivers, uh, teacher assistants, the secretaries, administrators, custodial staff, food services, et cetera. Um, but if we get to the far right over there in the high area, that's when we need to have that discussion of whether it's time to perhaps shut down a classroom or a building. And when we're looking at that for transmission within a school, we're looking for several outbreaks. And as a reminder, an outbreak is when you have two or more positive PCR cases that are related to each other. And so to be in the high range there at a school level, we'd be looking at multiple outbreaks in a school. Um, and then if we're looking at a high absenteeism rate, to give you an idea of what we look at there prior to the pandemic, we've always looked at it during flu season because we wanted to monitor how many students were absent during flu season. And so we were using a benchmark of around 20% absenteeism rate. And so that's probably what we're going to look at again. If we're looking at more than 20% of the student population, he would be out. Um, and then I just mentioned that staff capacity. If it looks like it's critical to operations and we're missing a large number of, of, uh, any number of staff, then we would have to consider whether we could continue with the in-person learning, either for the school or for the division. But again, all of this is in discussion with the local health department. This is just a reminder of what I shared with you last month, those layered strategies that we have in place. I'm not going to discuss all of them, but I will look very quickly at the first four. Obviously, vaccination is what we're continuing to encourage anyone who's eligible. We already know that CDC and Virginia Department of Health have, uh, informed us that that is the number-one mitigation strategy right now. Masking, of course, making sure that it's worn properly. Uh, as we've all done our walkthroughs through the buildings to ensure that we had safe openings, that was one of the things I know that I was looking at very carefully. And students and staff alike were doing an excellent job making sure that masks were being worn at all times indoors, and they were being worn properly. Very, very few students needed to be reminded to pull them up, and I thought that was excellent within the first three days. Uh, physical distancing, again, that three-foot standard is what we're using, but we also know that that's very difficult in some of our buildings and classrooms that are at full capacity, because again, when you have, I think it was 14,200 students, and around 98% of them are in person, that's a large number of folks in many of our buildings. So we're keeping that three feet as much as we possibly can, but we know it's not going to be consistent all day long, which is why that masking is so incredibly important. The screening and testing, again, I really don't have a lot more information. We are working with V D H and V D O E, who have partnered with some providers. We are going to be paired with a provider who will then bring that testing equipment to us with some staffing, um, but more to come. The only two things I can tell you for sure about that is it's not out of pocket for anybody at the school division, and it's also by consent only. So that would be permission for students and consent for the adults or the staff. Um, and then the rest of those are ongoing that, that have been in place since we've all let students back in the building in March. So nothing has really changed there. And then this last slide is basically to give you an overview, you and the viewing audience, actually, to kind of clear up some terms that we might be using, or to, or give you some definitions, if you will. The first one is close contact. And when, what we mean by that is, uh, anyone within six feet of a positive person for 15 minutes, and it's a cumulative 15 minutes. Could, so it could be, uh, sitting together less than six feet for 15 minutes at a time, or it could be chunks of time that add up to 15 minutes over a 24-hour period. And that's important to recognize that. The infectious period, that's defined as 48 hours prior to, um, uh, when the test is, uh, has, when the test has shown positive, or when the symptoms started. So for example, if the symptoms started, um, you know, on a Sunday, we would look back to that Friday. Or if the positive test was on a Wednesday, we'd look back to that Monday. So that's when the infectious period is. Uh, fully vaccinated, I think I've just explained, that's when you've had both doses of the Pfizer or Moderni, Moderna, and it's two weeks after that, and then two weeks after the one dose of the Johnson &amp; Johnson. Isolation, isolation is in reference to, uh, those who have tested positive, and that's when they have to be isolated for 10 days. Um, and this is basically from the onset of the symptoms or that positive test. And then quarantined is the term that we're using in reference to those who have been exposed to someone that is positive. Um, and this is a 14-day period. And although there's a little concern about whether they need to stay the full 14 days because, you know, maybe on the ninth day, they've gone and tested negative, is it okay to go ahead and come back? And no, it's not, um, because that's the incubation period for when this could, the, the, the disease could develop. And so therefore, we want to keep that 14 days in place. And the local health department has really encouraged us to continue with the 14 days because we are at such a high transmission rate right now. And so the 14 days is the safest, um, and we're going to keep it that way for the time being. And that's really all I have for you on updates. If there are any questions, I will take them at this time.
Board members, are there questions? Board members, are there questions? Board Member Jenkins, did you, you didn't have a question? Uh, I have a question. Are, are nurses the only people who are doing contact tracing? Because from what I've seen, we've had several cases.
Yes, they are. And Ms. Williford, unless you have other folks in the health department. Of course, we report all of these to the health department, and then they get involved with the contact tracing as well. But at our, at our level, it's the nurses.
We don't have a huge staff of nurses, and I was wondering how in the world they're doing what they're doing, and then they're doing all the
That's absolutely correct.
Contact tracing by themselves. So we do have some help with this. Okay. All right, thank you. That was my only question.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Certainly.
And we know that, that when we get to the point that we get to where we have to make a decision, we have a point now. We have some point of reference. The 20% is our?
It, it's conversations with the health department. It's conversations with the Department of Education, because we actually have to inform them.
Have to report to them, right.
And then, um, just as a reminder to everyone, because this was a question that also came from our public comment.
Right.
Uh, the governor was the one that actually closed schools down and made a school virtual.
Right, right.
And that may be a situation where the legislation actually does get involved with that, which means that they would have to basically, uh, make an addendum to their bill that mandated that all schools have five days of face-to-face.
All right, all right. And we have, as our next agenda item, approval of the rest of the citizen And we have, as our next agenda item, approval of the rest of the citizen advisory membership list. That's an action item, and those names were placed in your folder.
Madam Chair, I recommend that we approve the citizen advisory committee membership list as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the citizen advisory committee list as presented. Other questions? Madam Clerk, you ready to vote?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Johnson?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
No.
Board Member Story?
No.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Next item on the agenda is school board clerk's compensation changed from a stipend to a salary and report, the salary is now reported to VRS. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I recommend that the school board clerk be changed from stipend, from the stipend to salary, and reported to the VRS.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there a question or comment?
I just have one question.
Yes.
So we're not merging the position, it's just we're creating a new one?
We had to merge the position and change the job description. And so we had to change the job description to include the clerk's position into the secretary position, which involved changing the job description.
Okay. The motion has already been made and seconded, correct?
Yes.
Madam Chair, if my understanding is correctly, the administrative assistant of the superintendent, and we're dealing with the positions, not the people, but the administrative assistant of the superintendent will automatically become the board's clerk. Is that what we're doing here?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to caution us on that because from my understanding, we put that position in a delicate situation. As a board, should the board have to ever act on an issue involving the superintendent? This person then becomes a person that is accountable to the superintendent versus being solely accounted to the board. Now I checked with it and make sure that I was understanding that correctly earlier. And that's something I will caution the board about. We seek the opinion of our council, if y'all don't want to believe me.
I don't think it's a, we understand that, I believe. Did anybody else have a question regarding that? Or concerns? Yes, Mr. Story.
If that is what this is doing, is making one position automatically put it together, so whoever the superintendent's administrative assistant is automatically the board clerk, I think that is a very bad idea. That's a conflict of interest, for one thing.
Madam Chair, if I could make a comment.
Yes, Mr. Walker.
One of the things to keep in mind is that the executive assistant for the superintendent works directly for the superintendent. The clerk of the school board works directly for the school board. And we certainly hope that this situation never arises. But there is the potential that the board could ask action be taken against the superintendent and convey that information through the school board clerk. The school board clerk, also being the administrative assistant for the superintendent, will be placed in a very delicate position, and the potential for a conflict. However, I think the way that that could be dealt with, assuming that should happen, and I certainly hope that will never happen, is that the board could then dismiss the clerk, or take away the duties from the administrative assistant of that of the clerk, and then at that point, hire another clerk. But there is that potential, but it's, I will certainly hope that it's highly unlikely.
Let me ask a question as well. I have a question. The, a comment and then a question. The object was to have the salary of the clerk included in the package to allow the clerk's retirement to be subsumed in the salary, so that it would be counted toward retirement, because as a stipend, it's not. Is there a way to do that and keep the jobs separate?
And I think that's probably a Wendy Forsman question, as to whether or not there's a way that you could have the clerk position to become one that is recognized or under the umbrella of VRS.
Ms. Forsman, you can come forward, but I will address part of that. So part of the concern that we have here is the executive assistant to the superintendent has been the school board clerk for decades.
Yes, since it started.
And they are already in that role. The second piece, then, if we're going to have a separate VRS for a new salary for the clerk, the amount of contributions for the actual employee is significantly less than it would be if both positions were combined.
Right.
But Ms. Forsman, I'll turn it over to you. You want to get into some technicalities with that?
All right. The VRS has its own rules, and several years ago, stipends were taken out of salary as part of the retirement. So we cannot have it as a stipend if we're going to offer retirement on that piece. So for instance, a teacher working a sixth period, that is not part of their salary, it's extra, is not part of retirement. Stipends we pay, not part of retirement.
And Ms. Forsman, the second part of the question from Mr. Riddick's point and Dr. Brooks-Buck's question, if we created a separate salary for the clerk, how would that affect the VRS for that individual based on that salary?
If you create a separate salary for the clerk, you're creating another position. And then you're creating a position that's going to need health insurance, the 18.7% for retirement. So you're looking at a much higher cost than if you keep it a single position. However, again, you have to make those decisions based on what you know about the clerk's position.
Okay. Thank you. So board members, this is something for us to vote about. It's been moved and seconded. And board members, with the information that Mr. Riddick brought forward and Mr. Story brought forward, board members, please prepare to vote. Madam Clerk?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Johnson?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
No.
Board Member Story?
No.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. The next thing is a request for approval of waivers for community services graduation requirements and midterm and final exams. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the, or approve the waiver for community service graduation requirements and the midterm and final exams.
Is there a second? I second the motion, Madam Chair. Other questions?
Yes, I would like to know if these two can be separated. I know this, and if I could make an amendment to that motion to take them one at a time, please.
Mrs. Byram, would you like to amend your motion?
Yes, I can amend it.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the waiver for community service gradu, for graduation.
Is there a second?
I second.
There's a second. Are there questions? Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, was that Ms. Johnson who seconded?
No, that was Mrs. Story who seconded. We're going to separate, we're going to separate the motions. We amended the motion and then separated it. So we're doing community service first.
Okay. And Ms. Byram made that motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
She amended her motion, and Mrs. Story seconded. Board Member Story seconded.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Johnson?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Now we need a motion, a separate motion for midterm exams to request approval for waivers of midterm and final exams.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we waiver midterm and final exams.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there questions?
I would like to speak to the motion.
Yes, Mrs. Story.
I think this is a very bad idea. I, I wonder how, I don't know, I can, I guess I will ask, were the teachers surveyed at the high school level about eliminating midterms and semester? Have, it's already, our policy hasn't been changed. We're changing something ahead of policy. So we're not following policy. We already have a policy in place. So we're changing something that we haven't sent to the policy committee, and the policy committee hasn't brought us back these recommendations. So I have a concern about that. Then it automatically makes our handbook out of date, because now we've changed something, and it's not consistent with what's in the student handbook. Each of the quarter grades, one of these, one of these things, it says that it will keep students from lowering their grade, but it's also keeps students who are right on the edge of a grade from going up a grade. So it's not one over the other. Kids who are really close, they sit there and they calculated, what do I need to get on my exam? How hard do I have to study so I can get that grade right up over the edge? It eliminates that. Right now, each nine-week grade is worth weighted 43%. 43%, 43%, and the exam is weighted 17%. Now, you are putting more weight on the nine-week grades without an exam. Now each nine-week grade is weighted 50%, and they have no means of changing that. I'm not sure that's going to help the students. We are intending to help with this policy. I think this should be looked at. I think it should go to the policy committee. I think it should come back. I think there should be discussion on it. I think our, our employees should weigh in on it. I don't think, across the board, it is not helping our students who are on the verge of going to college. They are going to have exams. I don't see how this should be done here and now, once we've started school, without everyone fully understanding the implications of this. And so I would urge the board to vote no at this time, and consider that if you want it for a policy going forward, make it for next year.
Madam Chair? I would like to address Ms. Story's concerns. First of all, this is a repeat of the waiver that the board voted six to one in November of 2020 of last year. This is a waiver. This is not a policy change. The policy committee will review this in October to make this a permanent change for the handbook. Number two, in colleges, as well as in most school divisions in Virginia, we do project-based learning that's wrapped with project-based assessments. Very few midterms and final exams are given in college anymore. Number three, mathematically, four nine weeks, each math, each nine weeks is 25%, not 43. The semester average is 50%. So we are actually decreasing the weight of a nine-weeks grade. High-stakes testing, Ms. Story, is one of the things that students have consistently spoken about that creates high levels of anxiety. With everything that is going on right now with the pandemic and return to school, why would we want to create additional anxiety for students where one test can affect their semester and final grade, one and two letter grades? We've had conversations with teachers last year, as we explained when we passed this in November 2020. There is a typo in the memo, Madam Chair, where it should say 21, 22 instead of 20, 21, because we duplicated the memo. So the policy committee will meet and discuss this at their next policy meeting in October, and we will bring it back to the board, hopefully for a first reading for vote. Handbooks can be adjusted when it's something that is small, such as changing a sentence. We do not view it as being out of compliance, because this is a waiver, not a policy change. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Board members? Yes. Yes, Mrs. Story.
I disagree respectfully. Each quarter, are we going to have a first semester grade? Or are we going to have no first semester grade?
Yes.
So if we have a semester grade, each nine weeks is 50%, weighted 50% to make up that semester grade. Then the next semester is 50% to make up the semester grade. Then you take those two semester grades, and you only have two, each of them are 50%. There is no 25% along there that they are, and I don't see how you calculate that. But nonetheless, I don't think we, again, for a second year in a row, we should be doing away with exams. And I know they make some students anxious, but they always have. That is a difference of philosophy between you and I. And so I respect that, but I still would like to see what our employees want. And I do not know that, I have not seen any evidence that our district has had professional development across the board on project-based learning. No one's presented that. I don't see that our classrooms are doing project-based learning across the board, although you've encouraged them, but I don't see that they've been given training in that. So until we get that in place, I still think for the betterment of the students, they should have a semester exam, a midterm, where they can help bring up their grade. That seems to be the student mindset. But I rest my case.
Thank you, Board Member Story, and thank you, Dr. Gordon. And I would just want to clarify one thing. I know that we have had presentations on project-based learning. We've had them, quite frankly, for several years. Before our last superintendent left, we had presentations on project-based learning. So I know that our staff has had that training, our teachers have had that training, and it's been implemented in our classrooms for several years now. Let us move forward, because the motion is still on the floor. Board members, please ready yourselves to vote. Madam Clerk, if you would read, if you would restate the motion, Vice Chair Byram to... Madam Clerk?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Johnson?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo? Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Storey?
No.
Vice Chair Byron?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Now, we have a resolution that the clerk will read at this time. And this is going to be an action item. And this resolution is regarding requirements for students who wish to participate in athletics in the City of Suffolk. All students participating in athletics in the City of Suffolk. We need a motion. Madam Chair.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution for all students participating in high school and middle school athletics and extracurricular activities to receive a COVID vaccination or to be subject to weekly testing.
Do we have a second?
Madam Chair, second that.
Thank you. It's been moved in second that we approved this resolution twenty-one dash twenty, twenty-one slash twenty-two dash seven. Other questions?
A resolu- I'm sorry.
Board Member Storey? Oh, she's got to read it first.
A resolution of the School Board for the City of Suffolk, Virginia, requiring all students participating in high school and middle school athletics and extracurricular activities to receive a COVID-19 vaccination or be subject to weekly testing. Whereas on October eighth, I'm sorry, August eighth, 2021, the American Academy of Pediatrics issued COVID-19 interim guidance. Return to sports and physical activity for children who are participating in and/or returning to physical activity, inclusive of, but not limited to, organized sports within schools. And whereas, a considerable number of students enrolled in Suffolk Public Schools at the middle and high school level participate in athletics and extracurricular activities. And whereas, the, there are, I'm sorry, there are both physical and psychological health benefits for students who participate in athletics and extracurricular activities by improving their cardiovascular health, strength, body composition, overall fitness, and mentally, they benefit from increased socialization with friends, all of which support their developmental growth. And whereas, data suggests that adolescents may spread SARS-CoV-2 as efficiently as adults. And whereas, because prolonged close contact with a person infected with SARS-CoV-2 is the main driver of transmission, student participation in athletics and extracurricular activities influences the risk of infection. SARS-CoV-2 transmission among athletes has been documented in the sports setting, with indoor sports likely bearing the greatest risk. And whereas, most transmissions associated with outdoor sports has been related to off-field activities, such as sharing meals and during transportation in private vehicles, where people were unmasked or partially masked. SARS-CoV-2 infection rates for outdoor sports are likely to reflect community infection rates. And whereas, for the week beginning August twenty-ninth, 2021 through September fourth, 2021, the SARS-CoV-2 transmission level in the City of Suffolk was high transmission with a PCR percent positivity of eighteen point four percent and averaging three oh one point eight new cases per one hundred thousand people in the last seven days. And whereas, Suffolk Public Schools and the Suffolk City Board, School Board, wants to ensure the greatest extent possible at the health and safety of students enrolled, enrolled in Suffolk Public Schools who are participating in athletics and extracurricular activities. And whereas, School Board Policy Section two dash two point one, subpart, subpart twenty-five, provides that the School Board is responsible for the safety of pupils involved in school activities. And whereas, School Board Policy Section nine dash twenty point nine, provides that the School Board recognizes the importance of protecting students from the transmission of communicable diseases. And whereas, screening, testing is intended to identify persons who are infected without symptoms or before development of symptoms, who may be contagious so that measures can be taken to prevent further transmission. And whereas, because many children with COVID-19 are asymptomatic, their infections may be difficult to detect without regular testing. And whereas, the School Board encourages every student eligible to receive the COVID-19 vaccine to be fully vaccinated as defined by the Center for Disease Control in order to prevent the transmission of SARS-CoV-2. Be it therefore resolved that every middle or high school student enrolled in Suffolk Public Schools participating in athletics or extracurricular activities and all coaches and sponsors, in order to mitigate the transmission of SARS-CoV-2, are required to receive a COVID-19 vaccine and be fully vaccinated by November twelfth, 2021, or submit to weekly testing from SARS-CoV-2, for SARS-CoV-2. Suffolk Public Schools will offer a list of vaccination clinics for those who choose to be vaccinated. And be it further resolved that through the, through its adoption of this resolution, the notice requirement found in School Board Policy Section ten dash seven point five, colon, two, subsection E, C, and I is met.
Thank you. Now, I've heard the resolution. Other questions by Board Members?
Yes.
What tests are they being given for, to check? If, if they are not, if they don't, yeah, you know what I mean.
Yes, ma'am. We're looking at PCR tests, correct, Dr. Rice, Ms. Williford? PCR tests. And, and I want to just expand a little bit, just to potentially answer some of the other questions. Ms. Storey had asked earlier what accommodations were going to be met for any student that doesn't get vaccinated or doesn't do testing. For extracurricular activities such as clubs, there may be a virtual option. We're gonna take a look at that. But I do have to remind the board and the public that playing sports or extracurricular activities is something that we strongly encourage because it helps to keep kids engaged. However, it's not required. So, therefore, it is optional. Part of the reason why we have this tight timeline of getting this done is you saw from Dr. Rice's presentation that we have three weeks in between two-shot doses, but it also takes an additional, I believe it was, two weeks-
Two weeks.
-to be fully vaccinated. And November twelfth is the cutoff date because winter sports begin November fifteenth. We know that the higher percentage or rate of transmission indoors is vastly greater than outdoors. We also know, before our students even came back to school, that we had several cases on one of our high school football teams. And we're trying to do whatever we can to not only reduce that spread, but we gotta think about the teams, as well as when those student athletes or those that involve extracurricular activities then go to class for seven periods a day. That could be a potential exposure to other students. So, the timeline is tight because of indoor sports, but also because we're trying to be proactive and continuing to encourage people to go and get vaccinated. I've asked Ms. Williford to have some preliminary discussions with our local health partners. If the board approves this tonight, it's gonna be our plan to have our first vaccination clinic for any of our students or staff as well on October eighth. The follow-up would be October twenty-ninth, which would then help us to meet that November twelfth deadline. Based on the board's prior feedback, we are also gonna work with any students and/or staff members that may have a negative temporary side effect, being a little sick. The next day, we will not count, we will count as an excused absence for students. And we will work with staff to make sure that we have proper coverage. So, I wanted to make sure I gave the board that additional narrative, just so they understand why this is being accelerated for the board to be able to make that decision today.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So, is this just for those who make the team? Or are we allowing those persons to try out for the team who may not be vaccinated? Because speaking as a youth sports person, you may have fifty people want to play on the basketball team, and they all try out. But not all fifty people is gonna make the team. But what happens if you have some persons on that team that's trying out that is not vaccinated? So, is this a prerequisite in order to try out now?
Yes, sir. That is the plan.
Yeah.
Just for that reason.
I would assume that whatever we do for, for whatever physical requirements we have for kids who want to try out for the team, this would be a part of it. This would be a standard part of it.
Yes, ma'am. And it's coaches too.
Board Member Storey had another question before we vote.
So, for the weekly testing, you say that's PCR. So, is, it doesn't say in here, is the district paying for that? Is the district gonna run that test and pay for it?
As you heard from Dr. Rice, that's part of the reason why we are still working with our health partners. That might be an option. I will be able to give you more information on that at our next meeting because we're still working with companies such as Riley to be able to do that. So, as you see how that is written, we want to be able to give that flexibility of being able to give those vaccination dates. And we will see if we will be able to do testing by that time.
Would you please, I apologize, I don't remember what you said about those who have natural immunity. They come in, they're, they bring you that they have all the antibodies from a serum test. What did you say you were going to do with that for those kids?
For extracurricular activities such as clubs and things of that nature, we're gonna try to see if we can do a virtual option. We'll have to work with the sponsors because we're also-
What is, I'm sorry, virtual option?
Virtual option. So, let's say you go to a class council meeting, and a student potentially has a reason why they can't be vaccinated. They could still run for class council. And we will more than likely have them up on the screen on the permit, on the whiteboard so they can still be able to participate.
But when you get a vaccine, the reason you get the vaccine is to develop antibodies. But if someone has had COVID and they have those natural antibodies-
Oh, okay, I understand your question now.
Do you understand? So, they've got them.
Uh-huh.
Then, they can fully participate as long as it's proved.
No, ma'am. You still, the, the Health Department still says that you still should get vaccinated, even if you've had COVID-19. Remember, we have different strands now. And each variant that we've had is more contagious. That's our biggest concern. So, Delta, three to four times contagious. Lambda, they're not a hundred percent sure yet exactly how that variant's gonna affect people. We're more concerned about the spread piece.
Okay. Thank you. So, we don't know about the cost or who's gonna do that test, and it is weekly. And why, we definitely have after-school activities in the elementary school. Why isn't that included in here?
Because the vaccine's not available for students under the age of twelve just yet. Once it is, we will probably try to adjust the-
So, fifth graders, so, I'm sorry, fifth graders. Okay, so, it's just by age is why you've not done elementary?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Board Members, please vote. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Johnson?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Storey?
No.
Vice Chair Byron?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Members. At this time, we will hear from, oh, our, do we have, do you have the information? Could you?
We have the tallies, however, there's a tie for numbers, the second, the second place.
Okay.
We have all of the other information, but there's two that rank number two.
Okay, may I, could you bring them here? Could we see them?
Chair Dr. Brooks Buck, each ranking given by a board member needs to be read out loud with the board member's name.
Okay.
And then, if there's gonna be a vote on this, there needs to be a formal motion made to vote on whatever the outcome is.
Okay, all right. I can read my own. Board number, Board Member Brooks Buck said leave the rankings as they are. Major systems repair, one would still be one. Operations facility would still be two. Northern Shores would still be three. College and Career Center would still be four. They would still remain in the same place that you have. John F. Kennedy would still be five. Forest Glen would still be six. Elephant's Fork would still be seven. John Yates would still be eight. Kilby Shores would still be nine. Nansman Parkway Elementary would still be ten. Nansman River would still be eleven. And let me say this before I go any further, I should have said this at first. Former board member and former chair and the longest board member we had, Board Member Lorraine Skeeter and I, brought up the renovation of John F. Kennedy many years ago and fought for it many years ago, long before. It was a huge discussion with a whole lot of people. So, this is not a secondary issue for us. I do want people to know that. I believe it can be done in concert with what other parts of the city are, are having to have done as well. And I believe that Suffolk is one city, not two different cities with two different agendas. So, I want that, want that said. Now, this, I'm not sure. Board Member Byron has one and two combined. That's major systems and operations together. John F. Kennedy, number three. Is that correct? Number three. Number, huh? Yeah. Yeah. Terry Michael.
Then, I wanted to follow with Northern Shores and so on down as we had stipulated.
As you had said, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
I scribbled all over mine.
Okay. Lynda Johnson is major systems repair, number one. Number two, John F. Kennedy. Number three, Northern Shores. Number four, Nansman River High School. Number five, operations facility. Number six, College and Career Center. Number seven, Elephant's Fork. Number eight, John Yates. Number nine, Forest Glen. And number ten, Nansman Parkway Elementary. Loretta Mayo, number one. Major systems repair, number two. Operations facility, number three, Northern Shores. Number four, John F. Kennedy. Number five, Forest Glen. Number six, College and Career Center. Number seven, Elephant's Fork. Number eight, John Yates. Number nine, Kilby Shores. Number ten, Nansman Parkway. And number eleven, Nansman River. Board Member Riddick, number one. Major systems repair, number two, John F. Kennedy. Number three, operations facility. Number four, Elephant's Fork Elementary. Number five, John Yates. Number six, Nansman Parkway. Number seven, Nansman River High School. Number eight, Kilby Shores Elementary. Number nine, Forest Glen. Number ten, College and Career Center at Prudential. And number eleven, Northern Shores. Mrs. Storey, number one. Major systems repair, number two, Northern Shores. Number three, Nansman River High School. Number four, John F. Kennedy.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Number four.
I voted for the new middle school. That would be a combination of JFK and Forest Glen, as the study suggested.
Okay, all right. Number two. Number four, combining John F. Kennedy and Forest Glen. You said that's number four?
Yes. Yes.
Number, the next one would be Elephant's Fork Elementary, then Kilby Shores, then Nansman Parkway, then a College and Career Center. And then, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, the next would be Elephant's Fork Elementary, then Kilby Shores, then Nansman Parkway, then College and Career Center. Then, the Operations Center would be last. And then, Ms. Jenkins would be number one and two combined. Major Systems Operations Center. Number two, John F. Kennedy. Number three, Northern Shores. Number four, John Yates. Number five, Forest Glen. Number six, Elephant's Fork. Number seven, Nansman River High School. Number eight, College and Career Center. Number nine, Nansman River Elementary. Number ten, Kilby Shores. And, I don't know where number eleven is. Okay, number one. Number eleven is Operations Center. So, number one is Major Systems Repair. I'm sorry. Okay. And then, the final list is number one, Major Systems Repair. There's a tie for number two, Operations Facility and John F. Kennedy. So, I'm guessing they would be in the same year. Is that correct?
That's for the, the board to decide, since they both were the same priority.
They were in the same year.
Okay.
I would, I would assume. Am, am I reading this correctly, Board Members? Number three, Northern Shores. I don't see a number four. Okay. Number five- Okay, number five, Forest Glen. Number six, College and Career Center. Number seven, Elephant's Fork. Number eight, John Yates. Number nine, Kilby Shores. Number 10, Nansman Parkway. And number 11, Nansman River High School. So if we took these and placed them on our list for our yearly list, the projects would start 2022, '23 or 2023, '24? 2023, '24.
That would be the request that we would put towards the city and just to be clear, the city still has the option to adjust what the board has asked for.
Yeah, they always do, which usually winds up being adjusted to the same thing it was adjusted to this year. Nothing. Okay, all right. So we understand that. Okay?
So now ma'am, I'm sure you would need a motion to accept the order that was determined by your vote and if there would be any additional discussion before Ms. Gardner takes the vote.
Okay, now, our question becomes, what are we asking for and how many projects are we asking for in which year? Because are we asking for two and three in 2023, '24? Are we asking for two in 2023, '24?
Madam Chair, I think based on how it was explained, unless the board wants to alter this, you're basically looking at each project starting in a different year except for the two that you had tied to start the same year. That's pretty consistent with, um, some of the conversations and discussions that we had, um, earlier this, this meeting. Because again, the, the board is going to give direction to Ms. Forsman, Ms. Napier and myself. You can tell us the years that you would want to associate with those. If you want to open up that discussion, keeping that, uh, the priority the same, you can tell us the year that you would like to start. Or you have the option of saying that we would start each project one year later. I think that probably would be the most simplest way, um, to eliminate confusion.
Board Members?
I need to make a correction very quickly.
Yes.
The years that we're talking about here, funding for the CIP that we're looking at are years 2022, '23 through 2031, '32. So the first year of funding would be 22, '23.
Okay, so that's the first year of funding. So we'd be looking at the operations center and John F. Kennedy middle in 22, '23?
That is the first year of funding if that's what you choose.
If that's item two, are we looking at item two and item three? That's my question.
Madam Chair.
We, right now, we have four items in this.
What, what is the amount of, if we leave those two in the same year?
If you leave those two in the same year, you're looking at $12,500 and-
Twelve million, I assume.
Twelve million, I'm sorry.
We'll take that.
Yeah, that's a big difference, isn't it? Twelve million and not, you're looking at 21 million, 22 million dollars.
Again, I just remind everybody, if we're on that 30 million for the entire city, if we're asking for 22 million, that's-
It's not going to work.
Most likely not going to happen.
I would agree with that, Madam Chair. I, I would recommend to the board to look at starting each project in one-year increments since we do know that for anything new that we build, that's going to be a more than likely 20 to 26-month project depending on when it starts.
So that would mean that, that by the time we got down to 11, it would be in 2031?
Or longer?
Potentially, yes, as the, the city has a 10-year CIP.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And so to be clear, even though we're doing all of this, last month, the city said no to everything.
Right.
Correct? Right, okay. So I just want to, yeah, I just want to make that clear.
So they gave us nothing then, so it didn't happen.
Based, based on their vote that took place in February is when they said, no, this is now a new cycle for them. So based on your recommendations that you do today, uh, we would then take that to the city for the next cycle that starts in 2022 as Ms. Forsman just explained, um, for them to prioritize what they would do first for the schools and when, of course, it would start.
Right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And that would give time for the constituents to reach out to their elected city officials to let them know what they desire to see happen regarding the budget, correct?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Riddick. The planning commission meetings will be starting pretty soon. Realistically, and, um, Ms. Johnson, you can correct me if I'm wrong, usually by December, the CIP at the city level is usually pretty much done. And then it is voted on, um, by city council in February, normally every year.
Madam Chair, could, is the operation facility, is it being, is it, where are we in it? Can we use it? Are we using it?
Yes, we have, uh, print shop and food nutrition services there. Um, but again, Mr. Napier's team is currently at Frenney Avenue and a couple of other places. And the storage that we're using at Driver and also in some schools, that would be part of phase two.
So if somebody was going to give us some money for real, what's a realistic sum, while we went through all of this exercise? What's a realistic sum for us to, I'm just throwing this out here, for us to even expect? Anybody have any ideas? I'm just throwing this out here.
So Madam Chair, that's, that is the million-dollar question.
Yeah, because I, I, you know, while we're trying to cut out and put in and cut out and put in, it would be my question. It would seem that if we could finish the operations center, we could solve several problems. If we could do some of the things that are on this list, that would solve some issues. If we could build the school, that would be wonderful. But it doesn't look like we're going to get that kind of money. So my question would be, what should we expect to get? Because if you tell me what I have to spend, then I know what I should plan to do. And if asking for enough money to do two and two is the impossible dream, then should I ask for two and something else that'll go with two?
Madam Chair, I, I think that the best way to look at that or to give some insight to the board to answer that question will really depend on the other CIP project that the city has going on in those same years. And the 30-million-dollar threshold that Ms. Johnson mentioned is actually going to take priority to that. And I will, I'll bring Ms. Forsman up who can give a little bit more insight since she's been doing this for 10 years and has a good relationship with the city.
Okay. Okay, um, really just wanted to remind that this is your priority list. The money piece is the city's responsibility to decide.
Right.
The city, if you can remember in the paper several weeks back, has received CARES money much like we have.
Right.
They have alleviated some of their CIP debt with that money, if the paper is correct.
Mm-hmm.
So I would encourage you to stick to your priorities and not worry about the money. And let the city decide what they can do based on what they have done with their CARES Act money to alleviate their CIP. We do not know what that's going to do, but we do know that it's going to alleviate quite a bit of their debt.
And this is what I was hoping, and that's why I thought if we did two, two and three, then we could move forward with the rest of those and put them in order rather than trying to figure out what we might get because if they turn us down, then they turn us down. Rather than trying to pick and choose or try to separate one side of the city as opposed to the other side of the city and have them arguing over the same little piece of the pie when there's a big piece of the pie that's there that should be sufficient to attack both sides of the problem.
They have to make their decisions. Our decisions, your decisions have to be around your priorities. And then they will come back with what they can do based on what they, they know their debt ceiling is and what their overall projects are. So I would encourage you not to look at the dollars, but to look at your priorities and keep it in your priority order so that it's clear to the public what our board wants.
Thank you. So we need a sheet for years when we want to get stuff started.
Madam Chair.
Like this. Yes.
I just also like that, you know, remember, we, we did build two schools at one time.
We sure did.
And we did it very successfully. So again, I don't, I don't want anyone to underestimate what the city can do. And, you know, I think that also, I think with the operations center, I know there is a desire for Driver to go back to the city. We could eliminate that and make that work. So perhaps we send that to them and let them have their input as to how they feel they can best do that. Us giving them some of what they need is, for instance, Driver and some of those pieces, and possibly we can put that together. But I don't think we want to underestimate, you know, we, we don't not ask because we, we don't, because remember, we did build those two schools.
And that's what I was hoping we could do by putting the years down that we want. That's why this list doesn't help like this because we don't know when any of this will start. If we have a list like this, then we know what years we're asking for it to start.
And Madam Chair, I think you'll have some opportunity for pieces of that discussion that Ms. Johnson just mentioned as we've asked for a joint meeting to take place next month.
But as we turn in these priorities, we need to put some numbers under some years. So if we have some projects under some years, we can give them some idea of where we want them to start. So if we have two, two, three, and what's the next one? Five. Or two, two and three under there. We don't have a four. Two, two and three under, you said the next year is 2022, '23? Two, two and three under that.
Northern Shores would be 22, 23?
That would be the operations facility.
Uh huh.
John F. Kennedy and Northern Shores.
Okay, so that would start in 2022, '23?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we have five and six. That would be Forest Glen, College and Career Center.
So that would be 20, 23?
That would be starting on the next things.
So 2023, 2024?
And then we have what? Elephant's Fork. John Yates would be in the next categories. They would flow out.
Elephant's Fork and John Yates, 24, 25?
Nine and 10, and then 11. Are those the numbers I have left?
Yes, ma'am. So that, would that be 25 and 26 for Kilby Shores, Nansman Parkway and Nansman River? Are you, you want to do all three of those in that same year? Is that what you're saying?
No, we probably would have to move them out, extend the next one if we did, we did, uh, John Yates. And ladies and gentlemen, I'm just putting these down and we can move them over and extend them based on whatever costs we see are associated with them. But just to put them down under years, okay? And then the next would be-
That's it?
We've got, okay, so if we put, now let's look at the cost associated with them. We have two and two and three under 2022, '23.
So operations-
Well, wait a minute. Operations center would be-
That's 14.7?
Okay, that's, no, that's, you have five, five, five.
Right, but I, so you, you want to break up, you want total cost for the, or the cost each year?
Not total cost, the cost each year, like you have it spread out.
Okay. So operations is 5.5 million in year one.
And then-
Northern Shores is 7.6?
Year one.
Year one.
And Kennedy is?
Kennedy is 12.5 in year one.
Year one. And then we look at what they cost in year two and then spread the others over the, over the period.
Okay. So I'm going to give the board an example of year one. We are looking at 25.6 million for 22, '23. And Ms. Forsman following along, V, and Ms. Gardner, if my math is off. Year two, operations is 9.2. Northern Shores is 7.6. John F. Kennedy is 28.2, the main year of construction. 23, 24, that would be 45 million. And so you would like us to rank that just like that for, for each one and then we would send the board-
If we do that and then move it over and then send that to the board?
We'll send it to the board tomorrow for final review.
Yes. Is that something, Board Members, please? I'm just letting you do that in this, in this way, in this form.
My question would be, if we're really just going to be looking at the next physical year, what's the point of doing the rest of them when we should just, in my opinion, and I could be wrong, but in my opinion, just the top three, this is our recommendations, this one we want it, uh, to be funded.
Because we have to give them a plan. We can't just do one year at a time. We have to give them the plan for the next 10 years. We can't give them one year at a time. We have to give them the plan.
I mean, it's, I understand what you're saying.
We have to send them something like this.
I understand.
Board Members, other Board Members, do you have a question? Okay. Okay, are we ready to?
Ms. Gardner, you're going to, um, do the motion to approve the CIP in the rank order that Dr. Brooks Buck just provided. She'll need that tally sheet back from you, Dr. Buck, just for the order.
Well, we, maybe we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the, uh, have to approve what has been addressed.
Is there a second?
I think that she's going to need to actually read off
All of them.
what the rankings are.
I just read.
She did?
Uh huh. I read them individually and then I read them- the tally. And now he's putting them in order according to year. Is that what you're saying? Needs to be read off according to year? Because we read them according to rank. Now we're reading them according to year.
I think that it probably should be read according to the year in which the project is being recommended.
Okay.
Because that's all part of the CIP.
Okay, all right. Okay. Bring that, he's going to get that done. Then we'll just have to wait until he gets that done.
Okay, here's the rank order according to the school board member worksheet, CIP. Number, item number one is the major systems repair replacement hazardous materials management. Item number, priority number two is operations facility Mount Zion replacement phase two, which is slated for year 2022, 2023. Also, item number two, priority number two, rather, is, I'm sorry, and the price for that was 5.5. Item, second item number two is slated for year 2022, 2023, John F. Kennedy Middle School. Um, 112.5 million? Don't worry about the cost, okay. Priority number three, Northern Shores Elementary School, 2022, 2023. Priority number four, College and Career Academy at Pruden, 2023, 2024. Priority number four, Forest Glen Middle School, 2023, 2024. Priority number five, Elephants Fork Elementary School, 2024, 2025. Priority number five again, John Yates Middle School, 2024, 2025. Priority number six, Kilby Shores Elementary School and Nansman Parkway Elementary School, 2025, 2026. Priority number seven, Nansman River High School, 2026, 2027.
I'm sorry, board members, did you hear that? And this is the beginning of each of the projects, and remember, the years flow over. Okay? Board members, okay, may we make the motion there?
I make a motion that we approve the capital improvement plan with the years as stipulated.
I second the motion.
Mayo.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Johnson?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All righty. Now, we have citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Citizens who come forward, please be reminded that if you'd like to pull down your mask while you are speaking, please do, and then pull it back up, please, when you finish speaking. We'll clean off the mic in between speakers, and Mrs., Madam Clerk is going to read a statement before you speak. Thank you.
It is the intent of the school board to ensure that the affairs of the board be conducted in an open and orderly manner, that all persons desiring to address the board are afforded an opportunity to do so. Any persons addressing the board shall, one, confine their comments to manage germane to the business of the school board; two, refrain from words or statements which from their usual construction and common acceptance are construed and as insults and intend to incite violence or breach of the peace; three, refrain from obscenity, vulgarity, or other breach of respect; four, comply with the time limit for public comment as set by the board, which can be up to five minutes unless the board through the exercise of its discretion decides to allow less than five minutes for public comment; five, refrain from cumulative or repetitive remarks; and six, refrain from making any comments regarding any pending student discipline or employee grievance matters. The appropriate forum for such matters is the applicable administrative hearing provided by state law or where appropriate court proceeding. The school board welcomes comments from the public as appropriate. Board members will listen to public comments but will not comment unless granted permission by the chair. The chairman or other presiding officer shall preserve decorum and shall decide all questions of public order subject to appeal to the board. At the request of the chairman, a city police officer shall act as sergeant-at-arms at all board meetings. The officer shall, under the direction of the chairman or other presiding officer, have charge of the board members, the board chambers, I'm sorry, the board conference room, the waiting areas and corridors adjacent thereto, and the school administration building, and shall prevent disorder or interruption of the business of the board. Please state your name and address before speaking.
Thank you. The first speaker is Jamie Dwyer, Dyer, I'm sorry, or Dwyer. Volunteering in schools is the topic. Is anyone outside? Jamie Dwyer?
No.
No, okay. The next speaker is Angela Kilgore, who'd like to speak on CRT.
Good evening. My name's Angela Kilgore. I live on 123 Springfield Terrace, Suffolk. Tonight, I want to discuss the fact that CRT has been in Suffolk schools for the last two years, and that there has been an assumption that it wasn't. One, and it was also being denied that CRT was not being taught in our schools, and it is. My daughter, who was here earlier to speak, is one of those children who has been a victim of CRT and its presentation in our schools. However, after standing here, sitting here and listening to what's happened tonight, I also want to bring up a couple of other things. I'm sorry, I'm a little frustrated right now because I've watched, I've watched this chair.
Ms. Kilgore, you have to stay on the topic.
I am.
As asked to discuss.
That's exactly what I am. It is part of it. I've watched the chair generate a priority list, and it took, you stopped Ms. Story's recommendation, yet you struggled with this priority list for over 15 minutes tonight. And yet you did just say that you had a meeting a month ago, a working meeting. When you cut her off, you had a working meeting over a month ago to discuss this, okay? This is, this is the problem with what's happening right now with this school board in the city of Suffolk.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Okay?
If you're here to discuss CRT, please discuss.
Now, the CRT, what happened with my child? My child was in class with a teacher who told her her parents don't know anything if they voted a certain way. I've reported this twice to a principal. My child also was in a gym where a transgender student came into the locker room, bringing other male students in with them in a female locker room. This happened last year. These things are happening in the city of Suffolk, and there has to be an accountability, which is the school board's job, to make sure that this is not happening in our schools. Or if it's happening, it's done by a decision. Now, we should be listening to the students, asking them what they need and potential solutions. Not one time tonight did I hear any of y'all mention the students and what's best for them and any decisions you've made. You're talking about vaccinations, and there's people playing sports now that children have to play, be vaccinated.
Ms. Kilgore, you haven't talked about critical race theory yet.
Okay, I'm going, I'm keeping on.
Then you need to get to the study, please, ma'am.
All of this is involved. We have so, in a platform called social emotional learning, being used to bring in critical race theory into this classroom and people's agendas. It is happening. I want to know what the school board is doing to manage this. We have one school board member who's going to the schools and actually trying to observe what's going on. Anybody else doing that? One school board member who's actually trying to see what's happening with the students, what the students need.
That is not, that is not critical race theory, ma'am.
Okay, well, it all comes together. If there are teachers who are teaching an agenda in the school under critical race theory, you guys are responsible for that.
I'm very, I'm very sorry, but you haven't talked about critical race theory.
Also, have you approved a transgender student to be in a female locker room?
I'm going to have to ask you to be removed or sit down.
Was a trans, am I, am I?
Officer?
Is my time out? Again?
Your time is off. When I say your time is off.
Oh, really?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Well, there you go. That's why you don't have parents involved in these meetings. Because you think you can shut them down, and you're not going to shut them down anymore.
She needs to be removed. If she won't leave on her own, she needs to be removed because, one, you haven't talked about the topic.
Right here, finish watching this.
Put your, put your mask on or leave.
Trust me, I will. I'm a two-time cancer survivor.
That's fine.
I know, I know what I need to do.
Thank you.
I need you to tell.
Officer?
Point of order.
Madam, madam board member, if you cannot control yourself, you cannot stay. And Mrs. Story, I am chair of this school board, and you do not make those decisions. No. Uh, Mrs. Story, if you need to be removed, if you need, if you need to be removed, you can be as well.
You will not remove me.
Please, madam, keep your mouth closed.
This is the city hall, a place of freedom of speech, of all parents and.
Madam, out. Officer, out.
This is the city hall. You cannot push him up.
Out, 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 out. I'm not going to argue back and forth with anyone. The next speaker.
20 minutes to make a priority list.
Reed Smith.
And we're wondering what's wrong with our schools.
Reed Smith.
Now you guys know, she's the problem with this school.
Right. Reed Smith, thank you. Mr. Smith.
Good evening.
Will speak to issues with AP and parent pickup at Hillpoint. Is that correct? Thank you.
That's correct. I'm going to give some important context to what Dr. Gordon mentioned earlier with some of the challenges at the school.
Yes, sir.
And I'd like to get some, hopefully get some clarity on the expectation and behaviors of the administration.
No, we can't, we can't answer you from the podium, but we will. If you'll wait until after the meeting, if you'd like to speak to us, we will speak with you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. So my name is Reed Smith, 103 Karen Lane, here in Suffolk. I'm a father of three children, one child who's been through a Hillpoint Elementary, one who is currently attending, and one will hopefully attend in the future. That's why I'm here today. I'd like to say that until recently, my interaction with everybody at Hillpoint Elementary has been positive, up until recently. My mother's a teacher, so I have a very good understanding of the difference between being a volunteer and voluntold, and I appreciate all the frontline workers and the teachers and what they're all doing. But the primary issue I'm representing here today is with regards to administration at Hillpoint. For the last two afternoons, we've had small groups of parents standing outside for over an hour to pick their children up in person. I understand the drop-off pickup process is additionally stressful right now in most schools, but it does not justify the behavior outlined as follows. We were told, quote, "We did not follow the process, so we can wait until all the cars are done, as some strange punishment for a process none of us were previously informed about." Consistent condescension in blaming the parents directly by one instance of empathy or ownership by the administration. "We" was never used, only "you" are the problems to the parents and all the experiences we witnessed and what we experienced individually. A father was in tears inside because his child was put on the wrong bus, and an administration individual made it worse by telling the parent it was his fault. When asked who can be spoken to about the pickup process, we were told various forms of, "I can't tell you that." This individual asked the officer on duty to speak to us, and he told us, quote, "If she tells you to leave, I will arrest you." After waiting for nearly an hour and a half, we were told they were going to, quote, "Do us a favor and go get our child for us." Another parent was there with two screaming younger children, and this individual told them, quote, "Your son is fine. He is inside watching TV instead of bringing in his child," showing a complete lack of empathy for the dad and the two upset children. When the parent group got down to about four or five of us, this individual came out and asked us, quote, "If we had errands to go run instead of bringing us our children." One parent was called by the school to come pick up his child, and when they came to pick them up in person, they were told, quote, "To leave because they didn't have the proper paperwork filled out." Additionally, the officer assigned on duty during the pickup time on the eighth was completely out of line, as I've highlighted with him threatening to arrest. Peaceful parents concerned about their children, and the officer was also trying to tell parents how we were allowed to communicate with school representatives. This administration would repeatedly talk to the officer instead of us and have him come and tell us the updates that were only threatening and not helpful. A large contributing factor to these issues, outside of the administration behavior I've commented on, seems to be a completely broken and poorly planned process. We were sent new child pickup tags in the mail prior to school starting, and on Wednesday morning, everyone was forced to get in line for 45 minutes and have new numbers assigned. I witnessed several parents have to leave their kids in line alone and upset because they could not be late for work again. I was told if for pickup, I would simply have to tell them my child's number, and they would bring my child to them. The exact opposite happened, as I explained to you. There was mention of a walker pickup process, of which we and several others never received. No phone call, no email, and this was not discussed during student orientation and has never been previously required for any of the other years at this school. Speaking to our neighbors, the only reason they found out was because someone who volunteers at the school found out about it and spread it to neighbors individually. The in-person pickup parents appeared to be the scapegoat for frustration of the administration, and this process felt like our children were being held hostage by an administrator abusing their power. I believe there are two primary actions I request assistance with. First, direct intervention with the Hillpoint Elementary Administration for this unacceptable behavior. I've spoken with the Director of Elementary Leadership, and I would appreciate any support they can receive from the board to ensure this does not happen again. This type of behavior should be completely condemned and should not be tolerated by the community. Secondly, a review of the current process being used at Hillpoint Elementary, so this does not continue and can be prevented from repeating again next year. I understand everyone can have a bad day. But if behavior like this is allowed to take place at the administrative level without accountability, I fear the precedent it sets for behavior allowed by the staff when interacting with the community and poor habits to form for years to come. I lost my father and two uncles to COVID this year, so I am sensitive and aware of its reach and impact, but I'm also fatigued from every issue being swept, swept under the COVID rug. With regards to parent pickup, this is a process problem, not a COVID problem. In closing, with support from the board and Hillpoint Elementary for the issues outside of the behavioral issues with the administration, I volunteer to participate and help coordinate volunteers to assist with the pickup and drop-off process and be an active part of the solution for the benefit of the school and community. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have comments from board members. Board Member Johnson, would you like to begin?
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you to everyone, parents, teachers, staff, administration, everybody, because this is a tough time right now, and this is a rough week. There's no doubt about it. And there are going to be rough edges, there are going to be lots of tensions, and sir for what you endured, I'm, I'm very sorry. These, these are tough times, they really are, and I think for all of us, we just have to step back, you know, examine ourselves, look at what we can do to make it better. You know, it's just, it's hard. I lost my mother to COVID. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old grandson with juvenile diabetes. I have to be exceedingly careful all the time. And so I care. I care very much about each and every one of these children that we up here are trying to make the best decisions we can make for. I know there are people that don't like vaccinations, I respect that, but this is a public health issue. This is not someone trying to take people's rights away. It is not my right to make someone else sick. It is not my right to let these children be in danger if there's anything I can do to stop it. Now, the governor has said we will be in school five days a week, and that's what we. Now, the governor has said we will be in school five days a week, and that's what we are doing, but it's not without challenge. And so I just ask everybody, let's just be patient as best as we can, let's be kind to one another, and remember that we are truly all in this together, that, that is the only way we're going to come out of it, and it's more importantly, the only way our children are going to learn that we all have to live together in this world and make it work. So I just ask everybody, please, let's have some patience and kindness.
Thank you, thank you. Mrs. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ditto to everything that former Mayor Johnson said, and I just want to start out, Day Three, parents, guardians, students, and all of our SPS family, welcome to our new school year, and thank you so much for all that you do. Um, I know these three days, again, has been rough. I have gone to schools and sat in my car and watched, and I saw the struggles of the buses and the lines, but yes, we're in a whole new age of what school, first week and two weeks of school would normally be, and we have some kinks, so I hope that we all participate in being the iron that irons out the kinks when we see things happen. Again, I apologize for anything that may have happened at any school that was disrespectful on behalf of teachers or whatever, and I just, I hope, again, we have patience and we work things out. I know it will not always be this way, and special thanks to our custodians for making it possible that we can even go into the schools because they need to be clean and sanitized, and we can't even do that without them doing that first, and to our early bird school bus drivers who get up and pick up our students, who see our students first. Um, they can't be at school unless you pick them up. Um, a lot of them would be home. I know a lot of parents are, are taking their children to school because on Nansman Parkway, there was a long, long, long backup on Nansman Parkway to go to Nansman Elementary, Nansman Parkway Elementary School. So it is a big difference, like I said, and we just have to work these things out. I know some other school systems, districts, some kids didn't get home till nine o'clock. So if we beat that, that's one positive thing. We have a shortage of bus drivers, we have a shortage of teachers, and we, I'm just praying that, you know, we, we get through this and we work things out, and thank you, Dr. Gordon, for showing us over and over again that you are a phenomenal leader. Thank you for your cabinet, your staff, and anyone that participates in anything where you clip a piece of grass. Thank you for being a part of Suffolk Public Schools, and we're back and we're better. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Mayo.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly do agree with my fellow board members who I've spoken. Um, I would like to thank Dr. Gordon and the members of the Suffolk Public Schools family for your diligence and support in, in the opening of our schools. We appreciate all of the support that our parents have given and continue to give us and our stakeholders. Yes, the beginning of the school year is difficult. Uh, it's a new start for our students, and we have to start all over again. When you finish one year and then you move into another, and the first few days, the first couple of weeks, in my experience as an educator, uh, you spend much time ironing out things, making sure your schedules are working, making sure the buses are coming on time, all of these things are part of the opening of the school year. And then, the idea that now, not the idea, but the fact that we are in a pandemic, which makes things a little more difficult because we have more parents who are transporting their children to school, and so I do apologize too if there has been any inconvenience from anyone, uh, and during this time, and all that you have experienced. And we're gonna work together, we're gonna iron out these concerns, and then we hopefully can have success and continue to educate our children because that's number one. And we did, did not have in-person learning fully last year, so we want to be successful with that, have the face-to-face learning, give our students what they need, and that's essential. Uh, it's our obligation to provide the best educational opportunities for our children, and we want to do just that. Uh, on another note, before I complete my comments, uh, I would like to say that I'm very proud of Christina Byrd, who was featured earlier. She was one of my students at Elephants Fork Elementary School, and I remember her very well. In fact, her mother was the art teacher, Wendy Byrd, at Elephants Fork during the time that I served as the music teacher, we were colleagues, and I saw Christina as a little person, and now she's grown up into a wonderful young woman, uh, and with wonderful, wonderful, uh, career goals and realizing her dream, and this is what Suffolk Public Schools can do, and we are, I'm most proud of her. Uh, when I saw her featured, I could see that little girl of long ago, so, um, congratulations to Christina. Again, uh, let's continue to be lit.
There you go.
The leadership, the innovation and teamwork as we build the best SPS. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith. I will address these problems at Hillpoint. These problems have been there more than just this year. It is not a kink in the wheel. These problems have been here, we had entire, an entire sped team leave that school, we've had entire grade levels of teachers leave that school. This is not just Ms. Johnson a kink. This is a problem at the school of the rudeness. I can't speak for the police department, but I will FOIA that cam recording. I want to hear it, and I will address it with the police department. That is unacceptable. We are here to serve you. We are not here to sweep things under the rug for COVID, or gee, it's just the first couple of days. I disagree with my colleagues very respectfully. I do not agree this board does this all the time. We give excuses and we hold nobody accountable, and I don't agree with that. I am very sorry that happened, and I received over eleven emails. You are not the only one, and I'm very sorry that happened to you, and it is at my burrow, and I will address it in every way I know how. That's my responsibility, I owe you that. You're welcome. I think it's unconscionable that we passed the citizens advisory committees without citizens fully being on those committees. This board cannot ever say that they want citizen involvement when you pass committees that are not full. There is no excuse for that. So anytime you say or have a mission or a vision statement to include citizens, you are not being truthful. This is where citizens, this is where citizens can participate, and you want to have and pass this with those committees being empty. They can have up to twenty-two people. I find that unconscionable, and I will not allow this board to say that we want citizen participation. That is just empty words. I also have asked repeatedly for audits that our chair has bragged about repeatedly of what good audits we have, and yet they appear nowhere. They appear nowhere on the public site for the public to see, and I've asked for that over and over, and yet the public can find our audits nowhere on our website. There's no excuse for that. The city puts their audits up there, we should have all of our audits, the activity audits, for years, digitized by now and on the website. Let me also say that I asked two months ago, and I want to speak to the, to the citizens at Driver who sent us those emails, and I asked two months ago for this to be put on the agenda, and policy was not followed, and that has never appeared again. I just want the citizens to know, I have tried everything I know how to do, but if policy won't be followed, then I don't know how to get anything on the agenda. Lastly, student achievement is never mentioned by this board. It is the number one goal. It is not rah-rah camps. That was a great opening, but we have gotten no scores given to us at the retreat, no scores given to us in the last two and a half years, and no one put student achievement, isn't that interesting, on the mission and vision and all of those words? Student achievement and accountability, do you know what? They didn't appear in those little images. How ironic. Student achievement, number one, and COVID is no excuse. In fact, student achievement should be our utmost priority at this time because they are behind. I am very sad that we are not putting students at first, we are not putting student achievement This is just, I just don't understand, I don't understand this board in any way, shape or form, that we are for students. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
I want to start off my remarks with this expression, that one of our staff members, one of our staff members whom I respect a great deal, she taught me this, I don't know if she knew it stuck, but she taught me this, she said, "Despite our best intentions, we are responsible for one hundred percent of the impact." I'm gonna repeat it again for those in the back. Despite our best intentions, we are responsible for one hundred percent of the impact. With that being said, I don't think, I would like to take this time to apologize for not following Robert rules of parliamentary procedure. I did it openly, I'm gonna apologize openly. I should have ceased my remarks when the board chair said, "Mr. Riddick, that's it." I allowed my personal feelings to get in the way. I'm not taking credit for all this stuff that happened tonight. I don't want to be misquoted, Jimmy. Some people just gonna do what they want to do regardless, but I want to be clear because I have young people looking at me, and I want to make sure the message I'm sending to all of those who are coming behind me and all of my constituents and those who are not my constituents, I want to make sure you, you know that board member Riddick don't mind admitting when I'm wrong, and I personally feel the conviction that I was wrong. Dr. Buck, please forgive me, um, because I was wrong and I should have stopped, and it will not happen again. Uh, but I would also like to take this time to ask each board member to be mindful of our actions, our words, our tone, because they have an impact on the message we want others to receive. A wise person said, "It's not often what you say, but it's how you say," and it's those non-verbal things, you know, that we do, and sometimes we do it and don't even know that we're doing it. Y'all, this country is in a very delicate situation, very delicate position, and I asked this before at one last meeting, and this is why I'm gonna ask again. I would like for us to move out of here and move our meetings back to our schools because in this environment, as our country moves far, let me watch my words, I don't want to be, uh, critiqued again, in this type of environment that we're living in now, we have people in our country who are taking things to the extreme, and we don't know what a person is capable of, given certain circumstances. People appear to be perfectly fine, and then they just do something, just go crazy. Safety is key, and if the meetings are gonna continue to have outbursts and people acting in that manner, I will attend virtually because my safety is my personal priority. I'm gonna also give, uh, accolades to the citizen who came from Hillpoint. Hillpoint is one of my schools as well. Thank you for coming and identifying the problem and proposing a solution and being willing to be a part of the solution. Too often, we are beat up on, criticized, and no one offers any help. Our staff is doing the best they can with the resources that they have. Is that an excuse for bad behavior? No. We're gonna do our job to make sure that our staff is displaying all positive aspects of us, and that's actually the superintendent's job. Our job is just to make sure that our three staff we hire is doing what they're supposed to do, and we're gonna hold the superintendent accountable for any situation. And I'm gonna close on this note because I don't want y'all to say I'm long-winded. We are in Day Two, Day Three now, yeah, I'm getting old. Woo, we're in Day Three. It's challenging. People put out false reports, say the division is shrinking. No, you look at the numbers, we got more students. You can't plan for some things. My child rode the bus for years, but if I woke up in the morning and said I'm gonna take my daughter to school, I took her to school. You can't stop me from dropping her off. Communication, we're gonna improve, we're gonna improve. To every citizen who reached out to me with your issues, I did what my job is as a board member, and I took it to the superintendent, and if you didn't give a recommendation to fix the problem, I provided one. I think I taught the Dr. Gordon a lot this weekend, uh, well, not this weekend, but this week regarding those complaints. So I don't want you all to think board member Riddick is on a tangent, going off, bashing school members, that's not my scope, maybe others, but it's not mine. What I want us to do is all to be a part of the solution, and once again, I just want to say thank you for your willingness to even volunteer to help, and I'm, if it's okay, I will even help as well, because it's gonna take all of us rolling up our sleeves together. Anybody can, you know, point fingers, but it's gonna take all of us in there together. I don't need to go on the building, but I can help with parking and stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Board, Vice Chair Bauer.
Ditto to Ms. Johnson, Ms. Jenkins, Ms. Mayo, and Mr. Riddick. Patience, that's something we all need to work on, and as all of us have said, this is a trying time, we know that. It's trying for our students, it's trying for our staff, for the parents, for everyone involved. We know we have some glitches. I know the staff knows we have those issues. We have heard concerns from the public, I think all of us have. One of the major ones has been busing issues, and I think I conferred with Dr. Gordon about that on the telephone, but we're working on those things. I think before COVID, when you first came, Dr. Gordon, there were some busing issues, right? And now, we have more students, and we have, of course, time constraints because of COVID restrictions, so it's to be anticipated that we're gonna have maybe more wait time and so forth. And we're all, you know, geared to fast food and everything as soon as we snap our fingers, but that can't be the way it is. We're in a new... We're in a new normal, I guess. And so I just ask people to have patience. Please consult the person that you, address your concern to the person that you should address your concern to. And when a board member receives a concern, we ought to refer it to our superintendent. Because we don't run the school, he does the day-to-day operations of our school, and he and his staff will figure out those problems and those concerns. And I commend the staff for these opening days. I know it's very trying for them, they are under a lot of stress, but we've got a good, dedicated team of people, and they're doing remarkable work. And we don't have enough teachers, we don't have enough bus drivers, and, you know, we may even be shorter on staff as time goes on. We don't know with this pandemic. So we have to think about all of those things. There's a lot of weight on Dr. Gordon Schultz, I know that. I pray for him every day, and I know prayer is answered. And our enrollment is up, and he told me, I think a few weeks ago, it was climbing back 200 or more per day then. And so I assume we're going to have even more students. And so we're going to make plans for all of that. But I want to thank the Suffolk Public School team for their dedication and devotion. Even though times are hard, they are meeting the demands, and we know we have some kinks and some little glitches, and we're going to work those out. I have confidence in that. I also noticed in the audience this evening, I believe we have two people who are running for Sleeper Hole Borough to be on the school board. I commend you for being here. I taught one of you, yes, right there, and I know the other lady as well. I commend you for taking the opportunity to become a candidate. This is not an easy job. You will find that out. And you need to educate yourself, and you're doing the right thing. And I hope you're learning some things, and will research and prepare yourself for the job ahead of you. It is a very serious job. I take my job very serious. Every member on this board is serious. Whether we agree with each other all the time, we are very serious about what we are doing. I've dedicated 40-some years to education, and some up here even more. But all of us are in this for the end result. The end result is that we improve. And even though I don't agree with some things on the board and the way some things are going, I still know that my main objective is the education of the students in Suffolk Public Schools and the betterment of our city. And that is why I'm here, and each of us needs to remember that. We may have differences, and those differences may cause us, you know, at times to have friction, but that's not my goal. My goal is to remember what the ultimate goal is, is for all of us to work together. And we need to remember that. But I thank you too for stepping up and running for that seat. You are to be commended, and I hope you will serve us well, whatever the outcome. Also, on a lighter note, I forgot in our comments about the convocation, I wanted to thank Dr. Branch. She was a dynamic MC, and I didn't say that in my last comments, and I'm sorry, Dr. Branch. She did a fantastic job, and I thought the costuming was excellent, not only Dr. Branch, but I thought all of the participants at the convocation did an excellent job. That spirit was seen not only in the atmosphere, but the costuming, you know. And I commend all those schools for that because that says a lot about our team. And I know Dr. Gordon's all about team and motivation, and that is what is going to get us through this very difficult time, I believe, in Suffolk Public Schools. But we, I believe everything happens for a reason, and we are learning from these concerns and from the things that are occurring. It's just helping us to prepare to be better as we go along and build the best Suffolk Public Schools. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I just want to say to those who have come, first of all, Mr. Riddick, I accept your apology. It's not that you make a mistake, it's you're willing to admit responsibility for a mistake and to apologize for it. That really makes a difference, so your apology is accepted. With regard to using our microphone and making public statements, I have no problem with that. We welcome public comments, and we hope that from that we can learn. Mr. Smith, I really must apologize for your experience because you were kind enough to say you had children go through the school and you had not had that experience before, and I appreciate that. And so we know that there's a problem that needs to be addressed, and I promise you, customer service is an issue for our superintendent, and he will deal with that issue. COVID is a problem. It's a reality for us, and knowing how to deal with it and what to do and how quickly it's happening all over the system, it's not just at your school. And so we cannot look over that, but we know that we're going to do the best we can. And what I've been telling parents in my neighborhood, because they're calling all over to all of us, because the lines are being backed up and so on and so forth, if you give us, and I've been saying this for the nine years I've been on the school board, if you give us a couple of weeks, we usually, things usually get better with that because it gives us a routine and time to work out some of the kinks. And there are kinks all over the city, not just at Hillpoint and not just at other schools because we've gotten calls from everybody all over the place with regard to the delays and blocking traffic on the streets and so on and so forth. Parents are panicking with regard to putting their children on the bus, so a lot more parents are driving. We ask parents at first, who would be parent pick up, and we find out that instead of the 75 parents who told us they were coming, 300 parents actually showed up to pick up their children. It does make a difference, and it's not what we planned for, so we have to adjust our plans, and it does make a difference. And I do want to apologize along with everybody else for the experience that you had. But again, Dr. Gordon will handle that issue for you. I do take this time to say thank you to everybody for the hard work you've done. You are not public officials, and we're accustomed to taking abuse that goes along with our job. Our employees, I'm sorry that you have to have that, that you have to share that with us because that's not a part of your job. We thank you for the work that you do, for the work that you've done. Our audits are available online, they're available to anybody who wants them, and the public, I would correct anyone who says that they don't know what they are because our board member was there for the audit when the audit was presented and got copies of the material, so it's available. If you need audits from 10 years ago, 20 years ago, you probably do have to look for that because most people aren't interested in what happened 20 years ago, but if you're interested in recent audits, they are available. We don't have anything to hide, we haven't stolen any money, and we have internal and external audits, and the external auditors are paid for by the city. We don't get to choose them, we don't get to tell them what to do. They come in and they look at everything we have. We haven't done anything we weren't supposed to do, and if you're interested in the lunch that we had when we went to a conference, most people don't care about that, so they don't care about examining our cards. You can't buy anything illegal, you can't buy alcohol with a government card, they don't let you charge that, so it's nothing on there that's going to cause a scandal. It's really not important, but the auditors do look at that. I needed to put that out there because it really doesn't make sense, and I don't let tales go out a long way. The issue of Driver Elementary was discussed at the 5:00 meeting on last month where one of our board members was absent. We are given information on test scores when we ask for them. They weren't a topic of the retreat because the retreat was supposed to help board members be better board members. To be better board members, we need to learn how to get along and how to do the jobs that we're supposed to do. The first topic was to learn what board members are supposed to be doing. The second was to learn to get along as human beings and to respect human beings. And the third, of course, was our strategic plan. I am happy to report that we do a good job for the most part, and our students and our staff do a good job. We're going to continue to do that regardless, and so we're going to move forward. There's one other thing I'd like to mention, the rest are information items on this agenda, well, two things. We had two persons transition this month, none from COVID, but they are two people who were our employees. Valerie Morris, a teacher at Booker T. Washington Elementary, had four years of service, and she passed away on August 25th. And Jody King, who was one of our bus drivers for three years, passed away on September 1st. So please keep their family in your thoughts and prayers if that is your tradition, and we thank you. Unless there are questions, we're going to adjourn at this time. Thank you for your attention and your participation. Have a blessed and safe evening.